A quorum of the city council being present, I call tonight's meeting to order. If willing and able, please stand to salute the flag and pause for a moment of silence. Counselor Simmons?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like us to ask during the pause for silence, remember Cheryl Ann Pizzo-Zioli and also remember Winston Jones, both of Cambridge.
Thank you. And if we can also remember the victims of this recent shooting in San Diego as well as Sri Lanka.
Thank you.
Too much.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight's meeting is being recorded with audio and visual devices. There are hearing aids available for anyone who needs them. We now move to submission of the record on a motion by Vice Mayor Deveraux to accept the minutes for the regular city council meeting of March 25, 2019. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We now move on to public comment. Public comment is the time in the meeting when members of the public can speak for up to three minutes on an issue that is on tonight's agenda, with the exception of communications and awaiting reports. You will see to your left a screen that will count down your three minutes. At 15 seconds, you will hear a tone, that's your indication to finish your comment, and then at three minutes, you will hear a second tone, which is the end of your time. There's also, the next speaker is up there so folks can be ready. We ask that you direct all of your comments to the chair and not to individual counselors. When you come up to the microphone, please give your name, your address, and the issue that you're speaking on. If your comments are in written form, there is a basket next to the podium where you can leave your comments, which makes it much easier for our city clerk. If your comments are in electronic form, you can email them to the clerk before midnight tonight for them to be included in the minutes of tonight's meeting. We ask folks in the audience to please be respectful of the speaker. We ask that audience members not clap, snap, boo, or what have you when the speaker is done speaking. If you're the one person in the audience with a different opinion than the rest, we want you to feel welcome and comfortable in this chamber. With that, I think we are good to go. The first speaker is Marcus Johnson-Smith, followed by Kathleen Higgins.
It's working?
Cool.
All set?
To the chair, thank you, and thank you to the council. My name is Marcus Johnson-Smith, 1536 Tremont Street in Boston, Massachusetts. I am a proud second-generation Cantabridian, having grown up in Carcom Park for 20 years, and after that, I went to CRLS and went to Northeastern after. In my twenties, I worked at my local youth center. I volunteered youth baseball in West Cambridge in the leagues that I played in, and I served as a board member of the Cambridge Art Association. Today, I'm a business owner, pursuing a cannabis license as an economic empowerment applicant vetted by the state in my childhood neighborhood of Strawberry Hill at a property zoned for adult cannabis use. I'm also an appointed committee member for the Massachusetts Cannabis Control Commission Citizen Review Committee that's charged with informing the development of the state's cannabis social equity program. My comments today address some parallel insights into the city's development of the cannabis business permitting framework. So number one, I 100% support the Cambridge social equity proposal introduced by a coalition of second-generation Cambridge residents and business operators pursuing retail business licenses in Cambridge. The program strengthens the requirements of priority licenses for Cambridge residents and those impacted by cannabis prohibition in the city. It encourages true participation by city members who have direct ties to the community. Number two, in support of this equity proposal I just addressed in building off the city's current permitting proposal draft, I also support establishing a second group of applicants referred to in theory as Group C that represents the criteria for social equity applicants and distinguishes this select group from economic empowerment applicants who've already been vetted by the state. Number three, I wholeheartedly support a two-year permitting prioritization period exclusively for economic empowerment and social equity applicants in the city of Cambridge. Here's a few reasons why. One, if we want to be real about the word equity and what it means, this model starts to equate equity with giving important time back to priorities groups and giving the priority status back to these groups. Number two, the RMDs have been in business for several years now, and they've had priority status. These companies have international investors and dozens of members financing these operations. They came with the intention of said mission to serve medical only. Let's let them serve medical only for another two years, and if not, let's ask the question, why not? And number three, as this process is winding down, we have to be thoughtful about what these regulations are actually going to mean for members of the community who are looking to create sustainable futures for their families and themselves versus groups who've had the priority and have the means to do so already. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Kathleen Higgins, followed by Frederick Eck.
Hi. My name is Kathleen Higgins. I live at 345 Norfolk Street. I'm here to thank the council for Resolution 1, 2019-127, honoring the life and work of Cheryl Ann Pizzo-Zioli, my best friend of 40 years. I was privileged to know and love her. The resolution is a wonderful recap of the trajectory of her life's work. Some general themes emerged as I read it. She had great faith in what can be accomplished on the local level, believing that positive change for low-income people was more doable there than in other arenas. But whose voices did predominate? Values like equity, civil rights, human rights must be weighed to avoid prioritizing the privileged. She advocated making decisions through an affordable housing lens. I think one of her strengths was bringing housing experts out of their silos to engage and work with one another. And of course, those housing experts should include the people, often marginalized, who are impacted by policy. She always encouraged tenants to claim the power that they did have, to know they weren't powerless, to make their voices heard. But she also knew the importance of having a strategy, and she felt she was skilled at, in her own words, analyzing the policy and cost trade-offs involved in maintaining political and community support for housing programs. She fought because it was the right thing to do, not because you'd necessarily prevail. She felt being part of a group can have the benefit of changing you, making you your truest self. Being active can give you your voice. You can choose to be active in the world, choose to be powerless. She always encouraged people to have confidence in themselves. In some, Cheryl considers herself a houser, a term perhaps familiar to some, which means, according to a recent article about Catherine Bower, who was an earliest 20th-century houser, "a reformer, a lobbyist, or activist who seeks to influence policy and practice in order to provide good-quality housing, especially, but not exclusively, for low-income families." All of the tributes from so many places are a testament to her work, but also to her value as a compassionate, loving friend. Many of her fellow tenants, both where she lived, at 1221 Cambridge and elsewhere, have communicated to me and to others how much she did for them. One tenant said she helped him even though she didn't know him well, but more importantly, he felt she was a good and kind person. He said many things said about people throughout the building, but never anyone said a bad word about her. I will miss her wise counsel, her passion for her life's work, which is so inspiring, and her companionship. Thank you.
Thank you. Frederick Eck?
Good evening. My name is Frederick Eck. I've been resident at 9 Francis Avenue for the last 58 years. I come here because, first of all, I have never had any concern or relation about drugs, legal or illegal. I haven't used them, but I have no objection at all to legalizing them, which I think is a good thing because it will tend to reduce the illegal trade, which obviously is active in trading marijuana users up to much more dangerous drugs. This matter came to my attention in the last few days because I learned that a candidate for a license is on 86 Kirkland Street, which is very near my home and my neighborhood. And there are several reasons why I'm disturbed about that. I realize that today is not the time to talk about this individual license and that there will be a further time and a meeting, in fact, in the neighborhood this Thursday, which I think is put on by the would-be owners of this business, 86 Kirkland Street. But Kirkland Street is a very busy street and very congested at rush hours, and it's quite obvious, and there is absolutely no street parking of any sort except for residents with just a handful of meters. And these places are routinely full almost all day. The amount of traffic from outside, I would assume, would be busy and congestive and resulting in double parking and things of that nature. At the same time, and this applies to other small neighborhoods too, which are primarily residential, which Kirkland Street and Francis Avenue and the neighboring streets are, is that the same concerns apply about congestion and also bringing in outsiders to the area. My area is within 100 yards of four licensed restaurants, which are very busy in the early evening, two coffee shops, and an iconic meat store, Savonar's, and a liquor store, all within 300 feet of this proposed site. So I hope that serious thought is given by the council on the licensing in small neighborhoods rather than in large shopping centers where there is parking. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Hen? Carol O'Hare?
My name is Carol O'Hare, 172 Magazine Street. Thank you. Thanks, Counselor Kelly and others, for posting all these good questions and getting some clear and gray area answers from the city solicitor about retail sales of adult-use marijuana. And by the way, I did inhale. But why weren't these questions and potential problems, concerns, and suggested courses of action raised by city administrators and personnel earlier? From Cambridge Port's Central Square Vantage Point, and also reading various other neighborhood listservs, it seems to me there are some obvious pitfalls and failings. First of all, community engagement meetings. Really? That cannabis business applicants aren't even required to notify neighborhood organizations of the dates and locations of these meetings. To find these meetings, one has to go to the CDD website, click on zoning and development, click on special permits, click on pre-application community meetings. Last week, there were three such meetings on sequential days, all in Central Square, all for retail marijuana, and they are all within doorways of each other. Why are there no buffer zones required between the equity, I forget the acronym, the equity retail marijuana and, as there are in the social equity economic impairment marijuana retailers, as there are with other licensed retailers? Who will do due diligence about the investors in and financial beneficiaries of all of the prospective adult-use marijuana retailers? Blank-faced banks and pot shops will really be downers in Central Square and in other high-traffic locations where applicants are engaging with the community. And I call your attention to The New York Times Sunday. The article, I think it was front page, perhaps not, headline was "Getting Worse, Not Better: Illegal Pot Market Booming in California Despite Legalization." Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Hanley, followed by Nicole Snow.
Hello. My name is Carrie Hanley, and I'm here to ask for your support for our petition for a curb cut at... Oh, sorry. My name is Carrie Hanley, and I'm here to ask for your support for our petition for a curb cut at 62 Porter Road. It was on last week's agenda and was put off to gather more information. We bought the house from my dad, who owned the house for 51 years. We did an extensive renovation. We were caught for 1% to 2% for the open space in order to get a curb cut. We went through zoning, and we received that. Before submitting, we met with the Traffic and Parking Department. We also met with the Building Commissioner, who told us that we met all the requirements. After we submitted and received our zoning approval, we received all the approvals from, again, the Building Department, Traffic, and the DPW. I think maybe some of the confusion stems from our proposed curb cut is 15 feet from a crosswalk. However, the curb cut will not span the entire length of the driveway, so that is what puts us in compliance with the requirements. All of our neighbors have supported us. We've submitted all of our butter forms, and we also received several other letters of support from our neighbors. It is one of the only houses on the street that has a nice yard, and it's also one of the only houses on the street that has no driveway. Porter Road can be a congested street, so while it would be beneficial to us, we also believe that it's beneficial to all the neighbors that live on Porter Road, and we just ask for your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nicole Snow, followed by Jane Park.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Nicole Snow. I am the president and executive director of the Massachusetts Patient Advocacy Alliance that's at 1 Beacon Street in Boston, Mass. I am commenting this evening on the Cannabis Business Ordinance, Unfinished Business Item Number Six. I am also an ex-officio-advisor to the Cannabis Control Commission. My daily work is to educate and inform the general public and public entities about medical marijuana law and how to implement the statute with the interest in the matters of public health and public safety. The MPAA continues to be a resource for political bodies such as members of Massachusetts Congress, the Massachusetts Attorney General, Massachusetts State Agencies, state representatives and senators, and many other Massachusetts municipal boards. Patients were not only the primary stakeholder in the passage of the Medical Ballot Initiative. The patients also continue to be involved in the implementation of the adult-use statute as the primary beneficiary of the medical marijuana law's full implementation, as the law's language now resides with the adult-use recreational language in Chapter 55. What does our organization's mission have to do with the implementation of Chapter 55? Everything. And in my opinion, patients set the standards for quality of service in this emerging industry. How will we know if a product or a service is safe when the most vulnerable of our population can rule out certain liabilities that can cause harm to them? Every decision this political body makes with regards to how we implement adult use here in Cambridge will have a cascading effect on patients and consumers personally, citywide, statewide, nationally, and potentially even globally. Don't overthink this ordinance. This ordinance must pass for the sake of all stakeholders involved. Do what is statutorily required. Strengthen statutory language, such as requiring RMDs that gain priority because they were opened for medical patients by a certain date to remain medical if they wish to co-locate, to open for adult use. Chapter 55 and its fundamental components to this date are not fully implemented. That includes medical along with adult-use recreational. That includes banking for cannabis businesses and technical assistance for entry-level entrepreneurs. That is not complete yet at the state level. There is no rush to get this ordinance perfect on the first try, but there is urgency behind reaching a consensus and solidifying the meaning of this ordinance for all of the businesses and their beneficiaries that rely on your informed decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. And if you can email those comments to the clerk. Thank you. Jane Park?
Hi. My name is Jane Park. I live at 2 Crawford Street, and I'm here to talk about Resolution 11, which was to congratulate New Alliance Studios for reopening in Somerville. I appreciate the chance to congratulate New Alliance, which was a community-minded music studio that used to be in the EMF building, which is now, you know, belongs to someone else. I appreciate the chance to sort of mourn the loss of the EMF building to the musicians in Cambridge. And I appreciate the chance to reflect on the fact that New Alliance is now in Somerville, no longer in Cambridge. While there are a lot of engineers that we can choose to work with as musicians, not all of them were as in touch with the Boston music community as New Alliance Studios is and was. So that's even a bigger loss. A lot of engineers just do their work. They don't go to shows. They don't really spend their money in Cambridge. They don't support the businesses here. They're just in their studios doing their work. So I really appreciate the chance to think about all these things. I'd also like the chance to think about keeping public spaces public rather than privatizing spaces, like the courthouse. If we could keep that a public space, keep it out of the hands of a developer, that would be great. I appreciate this resolution as a chance to sort of reflect on the loss of EMF and the loss of New Alliance. Thanks.
Thank you. Anna Rae?
Hello. My name is Anna Rae. I live at 45 Trowbridge Street. I'm also here to speak on Agenda Item Number 11. On March 2, 2018, members of the EMF community reached out to the Cambridge Arts Council for urgent help in averting the eviction of 200 artists from the EMF building, the only affordable music development and production facility in the city of Cambridge, which was also home to the New Alliance Studios. By the end of March 2008, city councilors from this body, as well as the city manager, had been informed of the request for help. Over the following months, the counselor who has brought tonight's resolution before us acted as an advocate for the community, at times supported by other members of this council. Those efforts, for reasons I will not speak on today, were not ultimately successful in the long term. I want to thank the counselor for bringing this resolution before this body and the community today. By recognizing the resilience and persistence of local artists in reopening in a new Somerville location, we have the opportunity to renew conversation about how to ensure that the arts sector can survive and thrive in Cambridge. I want to congratulate my peers from New Alliance Audio and New Alliance East for their achievement. As a recording and performing musician, I have utilized the services of both establishments, and I can vouch for the critical role they play in our arts economy. I am here to celebrate their efforts. I am also here to ask the members of this governing body how they will use their powers to support artists and small art businesses in Cambridge in concrete ways. Not good ideas or best wishes, but concrete action. Finally, I want to state my support for efforts to explore artistic, community, and affordable housing initiatives in the Sullivan Courthouse. Thank you.
Michael Latulip? Latulip, I get it. It's not like you're not here enough.
No problem. No problem. Greetings, members of the city council and Mayor McGovern. I am Michael Latulip. I reside at 190 Bridge Street in Salem. I'm speaking on unfinished business item number six on cannabis business permitting. I'm also one of the 25 appointed advisors to the Cannabis Control Commission. I’m also one of the 25 appointed advisors to the Cannabis Control Commission. As many of you know by now, I am one of the 123 economic empowerment applicants certified by the Cannabis Control Commission in April of last year. I’m here today in support of the Cambridge Cannabis Business Permitting Ordinance as written, so that economic empowerment applicants are not delayed any further, and that adult consumers of Cambridge who voted for legalization have access to marijuana quickly. While a few tweaks are likely needed to gain a consensus amongst councilors, these tweaks should not require a complete rewrite and restart to the process. Cambridge needs to get the fundamentals done correctly first, which this ordinance has in place already, and then expand from there. Economic empowerment applicants don’t have endless amounts of money to spend holding real estate and paying attorneys. Many of us started this process over a year ago, trying to find suitable locations based on the zoning. Here we are a year later, and this is still being debated. I’m growing concerned, as are many others, that the pursuit of making the perfect ordinance will delay economic empowerment applicants even further, as well as the rollout of adult-use sales in Cambridge. Economic empowerment applicants are the only license holder required by state law to hire the majority of its workers with drug-cory records and from communities of disproportionate impact. This is fundamentally... If Cambridge prioritizes economic empowerment, as it currently is, it’s a fundamentally strong place to start for Cambridge to implement sound, equitable policies while rolling out adult use as safely and quickly as possible. If Cambridge wishes to develop an expanded equity program to include a wide range of statuses beyond economic empowerment, Cambridge should wait for the Cannabis Commission’s lead. The state’s social equity program doesn’t even have vendors chosen yet, and it’s clear from the Commission’s municipal equity guidance that they didn’t intend that that was to delay the rollout of adult use. Cambridge should move the issue of an expanded social equity program beyond economic empowerment applicants to a committee for further study and research suitable to handle these important issues without further delaying this ordinance from proceeding now. As of now, few municipalities have offered economic empowerment applicants preferential treatment like this ordinance proposes to do, and I think that has led to very few of these applicants successfully applying for licenses. The city manager will have great leverage in negotiating host agreements and selecting applicants that meet any criteria the city council sees fit. Let’s move forward the ordinance as is with priority for economic empowerment applicants and perhaps a few tweaks, but no more delays. Thank you.
Thank you. And please send that to the clerk. Jessica Pelletier, followed by Jeremiah McKinnon.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Pelletier. I’m a resident at 67 Gate Street in Boston. I am the CEO of Advasa Massachusetts and a certified economic empowerment applicant in both Oakland, California, and the state of Massachusetts. I believe that the city council should prioritize EE applicants ahead of social equity applicants because we’re held to a higher standard, and we have already gone through a very rigorous review process for the EE license. Additionally, it was not an easy license to attain. In addition to the process, we’re bound to much more stringent requirements, including hiring 75% of employees from areas of disproportionate impact, where social equity does not have a requirement to give back to the community. I think it’s unjust that we’re being put in the same applicant group when we need to give back to the community tenfold. We’ve been discussing this issue for over a year now, and I’d like to see things move forward soon, and a decision made. Reiterating what my partner, Michael Latulip, stated, “Economic empowerment applicants don’t have an endless amount of capital or money to keep our properties on LOI nor the financial capacity to continue stalling this process out. The longer we continue waiting on this, the greater hurts the chances for EE applicants to get a license.” Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jeremiah McKinnon, followed by Patrick Barrett.
Hi. Good afternoon. Thank you, Cambridge City Council. My name is Jeremiah McKinnon, and I live in Peabody, Massachusetts. I testified before this council and attended quite a few meetings three years ago, back in 2016, as a patient, looking for medical marijuana dispensaries like Syrah Naturals and Healthy Farms to get approval to open for patients in Cambridge. This was before even a dozen medical dispensaries had opened in the state. A lot of great things have happened since then. Many thousands of patients have been served, and I continue to pick up my medicine at the Cambridge dispensaries because they’re easy for me to get via public transportation. That was one of the reasons I supported it, and it’s still true today. I came to speak today in support of moving this ordinance forward in its current state. I think it will do great things, as written. This ordinance can finally implement the adult-use law in a way that will allow economic empowerment applicants and the RMDs that have opened for patients to open and begin providing greater benefits for this city. It took some time before the medical program became as robust as it is today, and in that spirit, the city and the community can continue to work together to tweak and perfect this local process as time goes on and the industry grows. But I believe enough time has passed already. It is now the time for the council to pass this ordinance and allow the adult-use law to have its beginnings here in Cambridge. Thank you.
Thank you. Patrick Barrett, followed by Ariel Silverman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Patrick Barrett, 41 Pleasant Street. I’m here just to thank the council for their support, as well as I hope that my petition for the... Well, the Grippo petition in Kendall Square is passed... Being passed to a second reading passes tonight, so we can begin our work in Kendall Square. That being said, I’d also like to thank Sister O’Hare for her comments regarding the cannabis industry. In Central Square, as you all know, we have many facilities coming, and it isn’t really the council’s fault, per se, but the state regulations require such design guidelines that, quite frankly, are going to turn most of the stores into what will effectively be the same look and feel as a bank on the street sign. I’d like the council to take a look at their current regulations that they’re passing with licensing in terms of putting caps. And, you know, while people might be interested in pushing things along, the council has moved very swiftly on this particular issue. I have seen no reason to make it go any faster than it has gone. Lastly, I’d like to fully support Ms. Hanley’s curb cut. Please give her her curb cut. Thank you.
Ariel Silverman.
My name is Ariel Silverman. I live in 59 Shepherd Street in Cambridge. I’m a first-year at Hartford College and have lived in the Boston area my entire life. I am also a member of Harvard Undergraduates for Environmental Justice, which is a group pressuring Harvard to divest its $40 billion endowment from unjust industries like the fossil fuel industry. Last Friday, on April 26, at the end of Harvard Heat Week, we rallied for climate justice in Harvard Yard with community members as part of an integral coalition working for divestment. I am here first to thank Mayor McGovern and the Cambridge City Council for supporting the divest Harvard movement, showing the kind of climate leadership we need in the nation and worldwide. This kind of leadership we need is the leadership we need to see from Harvard. It is clear that our students, faculty, alumni, in Cambridge and Boston community members, and local lawmakers are united in the fight for change and for a more just and stable future. Second, there is no time to wait for climate action given the state of the climate crisis. Harvard and other similar institutions must end its institutional inertia today. Harvard was one of the last universities to divest from apartheid South Africa, and now the stakes are even higher on the global climate crisis today. Now, there is a chance to change this historical trend and show leadership where and when it counts. Our vision goes far beyond divestment. It is a vision for a more just and stable Harvard, but more importantly, for a more just and stable world that is leading us to mobilize our campus and beyond. We are here today to call our peers and adult allies for the Cambridge community to join us in this movement. As a representative of Harvard Undergraduates for Environmental Justice and a greater environmental justice movement in Cambridge, I urge the council to pass Policy Order and Resolution Number 153. As one of my fellow organizers, Alana Cohen recently stated in a Harvard publication, “As student activist Greta Thunberg argued, ‘We, young people, can’t afford to wait until President Baca... The President Baccos of the world wake up and decide it is time to do the right thing.’ We have to hold our leaders accountable for permitting the degradation of our future before our very eyes. We have no other choice.” Thank you.
Thank you. And please, if you can send those comments to the clerk, that would be great. There’s a business cards on the table if you need the email address. Hassan Rashid, followed by Heather Hoffman.
Hello, everybody. I’m Hassan Rashid. I reside at 820 Massachusetts Avenue. My public comment is concerning Committee Report Agenda Item Number Three, City Manager’s Agenda Item Number Six, and Unfinished Business 8 through 15, and any other Agenda Item that relates directly and indirectly to homelessness. The proposed Affordable Housing Overlay District is bad news for Cambridge’s homeless sector mosaic because permanent support of Cambridge housing is designed to serve the most vulnerable and disadvantaged peoples, those experiencing homelessness, living on the fringes of mainstream society. For the homeless, the Affordable Housing Overlay District spells out loud and clear, “Not in my backyard, NIMBY,” as the study planning research of the Affordable Housing Overlay District stands now. Not a single unit of affordable housing will be cut or designated directly there for the homeless. So far, the atmosphere in Affordable Housing Overlay District formulations and planning is filled with nothing but policy barriers and research gaps. In the last line of City Manager’s Agenda Item Number Six, it reads as follows, “And other services HUD determines are effective at reducing homelessness. And other services HUD determines are effective at reducing homelessness.” It is not far-fetched to conclude that HUD has mandated other uses on how this HUD funding can be employed. For example, the construction, development of permanent supportive housing, homeless housing, from the ground up. Finally, last week, my public comment included a brief account of my thinking on City Manager’s Agenda Item Number 2 through 9 in regards to appropriating and borrowing, now listed on today’s agenda as Unfinished Business Item 8 through 15. I went on official municipal record last week stating the following, as I stated it once again, as for Unfinished Business Item 8 through 15. I wish the city manager and city council could do the same with appropriations and borrowing to invest in permanent supportive homeless housing solutions pertaining to construction and development from the ground up. Thank you.
Thank you. Heather Hoffman.
Hello. Heather Hoffman, 213 Hurley Street. The first thing I want to talk about is the resolution that I’m really grateful that people spoke about before me, having to do with the loss of the arts community in Cambridge, and how Somerville has welcomed it. I’ve noticed this in the past. For example, the Deborah Mason School of Dance is another institution born and raised in Cambridge in both senses of that, that we have let Somerville have because we are not interested in protecting arts. I think that we should rethink how we’re going about things. I am grateful that the Cambridge Redevelopment Authority is looking at helping nonprofits that have been in the city a long time and are losing their home, but I think that the city could do a whole lot more to keep vital things like the arts in our community. And then I’d like to talk for a moment about the petition about Eversource. Now, the thing that struck me when I first read it, and that struck me again as I reread it in preparing to speak today, is what it doesn’t say. And that is something that I mentioned last week, which is that, as far as I can tell, the city is actually on the side of the citizens in this. And we should all ask ourselves why it is that this is not written as expressing support for the city’s position on this, but is instead acting as though the city has nothing to do with it, and the city is not supporting us. And I think that if you and the unelected officials think about it for a moment, perhaps you will understand that that is a general feeling of the citizens, that those of us who are paying attention do not think that the city is on our side so much of the time. And the city has not spoken out on this particular thing to point out how it is on our side. You could do more. You could really do more. And unelected officials, when they are going around and talking to people in neighborhood groups and other gatherings, could do a whole lot more to show how the city is supporting what we want and need in order to make this a great city that we know it to be and that we want it to continue to be. Thank you.
Did Mr. Hen arrive? No. That is the end of folks who have signed in. If you would... Anyone who has not signed up for public comment who would like to speak? Peter, please come up. Name, address, and the issue you’re speaking on, please.
My name is Peter Valentine. I live at 37 Brookline Street. Creativity is life itself. On creativity thriving in Cambridge, it’s time to introduce invigorating vitality to Central Square. An inexpensive way has been provided to do that.
Mr. Harding.
Good evening, councilors. Good to be with you. So I gave the clerk a copy of a proposal that I want you to consider as you’re formulating the Cambridge Ordinance around adult use. So first of all, thank you, thank you, thank you for all the work that you’ve done, particularly, you know, Councillor Kelly, Councillor Siddiqui, and others who I’ve talked to over the last couple of weeks around what equity looks like for Cambridge. Some of my partners in this endeavor to become an economic empowerment cannabis business, I support much of what was said today. I think that this proposal was a thorough and fair and balanced approach to make sure that we, as economic empowerment group categorized, people vetted by the state, aren’t in a situation where another level of competition is set up through the social equity program, which I think has some very good ideals. So I just want to say, I know that you all will do the right thing. I know that you all have thoroughly looked at this. I think that this proposal, as you read it, will show a way, just one way, to even the playing field and make sure that economic empowerment groups are given a fair shot at this green rush. I also would say that we should watch this globe spotlight because it is not over. This will unveil, over time, many different educational kind of articles that will show you exactly what’s happening in this very, very highly predatory... The predatory nature of this particular business. But please watch out for how economic empowerment groups across the state are really having a struggle to really get up and going. And I think that if you look at the proposal, which is deemed the social equity proposal, Cambridge’s social equity proposal, you’ll see some things in there that I think you all have talked about in terms of espousing your virtues of equality and equity within this business. I also would say that, as some of my folks had said earlier, you know, we met my group with some of the other economic empowerment groups to make sure that they thought that this language was okay. So I think that when you read it and as you have your debates tonight, you’ll see that there are some things that have come up in the conversation that we’ve had over time, whether it be in a subcommittee hearing or the last time that this was before the council. Lastly, I’d want to say just thank you, thank you, thank you. I think that you all have a huge burden to make sure that equity is delivered in this new emerging cannabis business. I know many of you personally have worked with you, and I know that you’ll meet that threshold because I understand how important you take your jobs, but I do want you to understand that you have some very, very worthy applicants who, like you, are born and raised in Cambridge and have done it the right way. So I just want to make sure that you take a look at that proposal. I look forward to hearing the conversation, and I’d be available to speak about any particular point, as Marcus talked to earlier. Lastly, I think everybody got a copy. Mr. Mayor, I will definitely email you one. I think I gave my last copy to somebody else, but it wasn’t because I don’t think that you’re worthy. It’s just that I only had nine, and I had to give it to someone underway.
I’ll make note of that, Mr. Harding.
You make a note of that. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and I look forward to the conversation. Thanks.
Is there anyone else who has not signed in to speak who would like to speak on an issue on tonight’s agenda? Seeing none on a motion by Vice Mayor Deveraux to close public comment, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Public comment is closed. We now move to reconsiderations. There are none. We now move to the city manager’s agenda on the panel. On a motion by Vice Mayor... On a motion by Vice Mayor Deveraux to bring the City Manager's Agenda before us for discussion and adoption, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Vice Mayor Deveraux?
Thank you. May I poll number eight and nine, please?
Pleasure to the council. Councilors on the round?
Number six and 10?
Pleasure to the council. Roll call on the balance, Madam Clerk?
On the consent agenda items, Councilor Cologne?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deveraux?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly? Councilor Mallon?
Yes.
Councilor Siddiqui?
Yes.
Councilor Simmons?
Yes.
Councilor Tumi? Councilors on the van?
Yes.
Mayor McGovern?
Yes.
And the consent agenda items are adopted on the affirmative vote with nine in favor.
We now move back to City Manager Agenda Item Number Six. Transmitting communication from Louis A. Di Pasquale, City Manager, relative to the appropriation of $4,701,678 from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, to the Grant Fund Human Services Salary and Wages Account, to the Other Ordinary Maintenance Account, and to the Grant Fund Human Services, $7,163, which will be used for contracted, which will be used for contracted for permanent supportive housing units, PSH, for chronically homeless individuals and families, rapid rehousing for families, leasing assistance, and other services HUD determines are effective at reducing homelessness. It's pulled by Councilor Zondovan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for bringing this forward. I was just interested in learning more about exactly what these services are. And I think there's some consternation around the language that says other services HUD determines are effective. So if you could maybe help us understand what that means and what those services might be.
Sure.
Ms. Semenov?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So this is happily for us, although a competitive process, it's an annual grant process. We have a little bit of additional money. I think it was perhaps $4.5 million last year and it's $4.7 this year. And the projects that are being funded, the city applies on behalf of a number of the not-for-profit housing providers. And the primary services, or the primary program that's funded through this is actually rental assistance, for permanent supported housing. So it's units of housing and the services in conjunction with those units of housing are provided by the different agencies. So there's a fair amount of money that goes to Home Start, goes to Heading Home, goes to Transition House. There's a program with Just a Start. And so these are all entities. There's the YWCA. There's some funding for the YMCA. And so these are all units that are either in Cambridge or outside of Cambridge for permanent supported housing. The language that you asked about or other services that HUD deems appropriate, unfortunately, over the years HUD has considerably constricted the kinds of services that they'll fund. It used to be that through this same project, HUD would actually provide services that supported people independent of housing and they have really zeroed in all of their funding. We're forced to rank every year in priority order the projects and projects that are not primarily housing are no longer being funded by HUD. And the city has picked up some of those projects and there've been some state funding. But that's really, I would say that it's, I think we gave the language because it's part of what HUD says, but the reality is they've put all their money towards housing, which is not a bad thing, but it means there aren't really standalone services anymore.
Counselor?
Thank you.
Pleasure to the council. Councilor Cologne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to Ms. Semenov. I realize we supplement this. You alluded to it within our budget. But am I right? This is the biggest source of income?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. This is by far the largest source of income. We can talk more about it at the budget hearing, but there's an additional, close to $100,000 this year that the City Manager put into the budget to actually provide service funding in association with the housing. So the housing authority was able to apply for, I think we may have talked about this here before, a set of vouchers to be dedicated to serving individuals coming out of homelessness. And in order to try to get more of those units to be located in Cambridge, to get some of the housing located here, the City Manager agreed to, for us to fund a position. We don't think it'll be a city position. We're going to contract with one of the not-for-profits so that they can actually provide the services that make it possible for individuals to more easily be housed. So there's funding for that. In addition, at the YMCA, we have transitioned some beds that were formerly transitional units into permanent units because there really isn't a place called transitional units, but there really isn't a place for people to move. And so in order to provide more services there, we're partnering with Bay Cove. They have a bunch of units that they're funded through HUD. So we were providing so that we can have a recovery coach onsite at the Y to help support individuals. So the service money is drying up in some sense or needing to come from other places. But this year, City Manager agreed in order for us to be able to make the most effective use of housing dollars to be able to provide some of the service money that can make that possible.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Mayor. I understand it's best to have the services at the dwelling location. And just, and I'll ask other questions at the finance meeting that are off-topic. But just one quick question. How many of our housing resources have the support services at those locations?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I actually was prepared for the question that you always ask, which is how many units are in Cambridge?
That's next.
And how many units are outside? So I came, asked staff. I said, "I know Councilor Cologne's going to ask this question and I'd like to be prepared to answer it." So, and I think that part of the answer of that is that there are few places where there's actually enough units in one building where there are services. The YMCA is one place where we actually have the services onsite. Most of the buildings are in scattered sites, so the staff are going and providing the services in one building or another rather than. But it's a lot better if we can locate all of those units in Cambridge rather than having staff in Cambridge, in Everett, in Brockton, in whatever the places where we can find units.
Thank you. I'll ask more questions next week or maybe it's this week. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I have a question, if everyone's all set. You know, in that list of where we provide support, and this would be something I would imagine that wouldn't come from HUD but would come from something we would have to fund, I don't know what the number is. It's a handful, more than a couple, but probably not 50, of formerly homeless folks that we place in inclusionary housing because they have, they get a voucher. And that is, that doesn't always work out too well for them because that transition from the street to the 15th floor of a building in Kendall Square is a tough transition. Are we putting, are we supporting those folks as well through this?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to you. For the most part, it's rare that individuals coming out of homeless end up on their own in inclusionary housing. There actually is a project with one of the buildings supported through Home Start in which Home Start actually is the entity which is contracting for the units and then they support the individuals who are in those units. And this was something that, I have to say, our Community Development Department helped broker that and nurture that partnership with the building. And they're looking to see if they could find other buildings that would be willing to do it because actually having the intermediary in there, and so in this case, it's Home Start, which is actually in a position to help the individual navigate with the building management to ensure that it's smoother. And they're also there available, if it turns out that it can't work, to try to figure out where could the person move that might work better.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's only in that one building? So what if, or even with CHA, what if someone, you know, John, for example, who went from homeless into the Manning, was he getting, were there any supports to help him with that transition or?
So the elder housing units, which have a number of, or some number of individuals with disabilities or all have CASCAP service providers who are associated with those buildings. So actually, it's the elder service buildings which have the most resources to support individuals. And so that would be, in this case, it turned out not to be enough, but would have been available to him.
Okay. Good. Thank you. Good to know. Anything further? Roll call.
On Agenda Item Number Six, Councilor Cologne?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deveraux?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly? Councilor Mallon?
Yes.
Councilor Siddiqui?
Yes.
Councilor Simmons?
Yes.
Councilor Tumi?
Yes.
Councilors on the van?
Yes.
Mayor McGovern?
Yes.
And Agenda Item Number Six is adopted on the affirmative vote with nine in favor.
Thank you. We now move to City Manager Agenda Item Number Eight. Transmitting communication from Louis A. Di Pasquale, City Manager, relative to the transfer of $24,000 from the General Fund City Clerk Salary and Wages Account to the General Fund City Clerk Other Ordinary Maintenance Account to pay for costs associated with required legal advertising for legal notices, hearings, and petitions through the end of the fiscal year. This was pulled by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. I just wanted to get a little more context on this. I don't challenge the fact that we need to allocate more money for unanticipated legal advertising expenses. It just, it occurred to me that we don't really have any idea what the total number is for the year or how it compares to prior years or if these rates are. My understanding is that we are kind of, have only one media outlet where we can place these notices, right? The Cambridge Chronicle. And I don't know sort of if that rate is something that is rising or staple. I know, so just wanted a little context and...
Mr. Manager?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think in talking to the city clerk, we're going to let her address this. This has happened, I will just say before, this has happened in the past and we monitor it. And if we need to adjust the budget, we've been able to do that through transfers. So this, probably did this maybe three years ago. It depends. There were just some years where it's just more advertising and obviously, these are important ads. But I'll leave it to Donna to talk about the specifics.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Vice Mayor Deveraux. We have spent over $18,000 this year. I mean, it's something that's very hard to predict. Some years, we don't have all that many ads. Other years, we do. This year, we had a few more municipal code amendments. I tried to use the legal description that the community development uses for zoning because it can save money and they know what the legal description of something is. But if something is less than eight octavo pages, I have to put the whole thing in. I have to put the whole ad in. And in the budget hearing, we put that in and that's, you know, it's expensive. So if you'll look at my memo, I think I tried to explain the ads that I am anticipating and there are quite a few. So hopefully, this money will be enough.
Vice Mayor?
Again, and I'm not challenging that we need to spend it. I'm just trying to get a sense of, so is, when you said $18,000, is that in this year? Is that this calendar year or this fiscal year? Because this is asking, so there's a little cushion in here in case somebody gives us a petition between now and the end of the fiscal year? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. Well, yes. This is for, I think, I think in my memo, I tried to say we have 18 loan audits. You have, there are nine loan audits that are on unfinished business. They require two advertisements each. We have eight legal ads. We have a hearing notice, which is going to be the bid, which is a big, you know, a big ad. Plus, that will have to be put in twice. The second one may not be in this fiscal year. So I figured there's about 27 potential ads between now and the end of June. We have a couple of bills that we haven't paid because we haven't received the bills, so.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? Roll call.
Councilor Cologne?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deveraux?
Yes.
Councilor Kelly? Councilor Mallon?
Yes.
Councilor Siddiqui?
Yes.
Councilor Simmons?
Yes.
Councilor Tumi?
Yes.
Councilors on the van?
Yes.
Mayor McGovern?
Yes.
And the Agenda Item Number Eight is adopted on the affirmative vote with nine in favor.
We now move to City Manager Agenda Item Number Nine. A communication transmitted from Louis A. Di Pasquale, City Manager, relative to a waiting report, Item Number 18-138, regarding speed limits and traffic calming measures. It's pulled by the Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you. Well, this was actually really interesting to see the projects that we have done and to see the sort of before and after speeds and to see where we'd been more or less successful. And so I just wanted to ask some questions. And it's also good to have this glossary of all of the different terms because people ask us for, you know, the terminology is evolving and we get asked for, you know, can we have speed bumps? And we say, "Well, we don't really do speed bumps anymore, but we do curb extensions, we do raised intersections and that sort of thing." So it's a good reference. But I wanted to call out a couple of the streets. One is Brattle Street, where we continue to have residents complain that people go too fast on Brattle Street. And I also want to point out that these speeds in the columns, the before and after are, I know it's the industry standard that you use this 85 percentile, which my understanding is that means 85% of the vehicles go that speed or lower in free-flowing conditions. So not measuring when everybody's gridlocked during rush hour. But that still means 15% go faster. And on Brattle Street, where we have continual complaints about people going too fast and there have been instances where cars have crashed into trees and it just, you know, it's one of those streets that it's hard to calm the traffic on. I noticed that what we did only changed it from 31 miles an hour to 30 miles an hour. And the speed limit currently is 25 miles an hour. And I think Brattle is not going to become a 20 mile an hour one, which clearly, we would have trouble enforcing 20 miles an hour unless the road design changed significantly. So that's one. The other one where I noticed we didn't have much success is on Holworthy Street, which, you know, is a downhill street for a good part of it and I think people pick up speed there. But it's not, it doesn't seem to have been very effective. So I kind of wonder, when you have data like this, what it indicates to you? Does it mean you're going to go back and revisit that, particularly in light of the fact that since some of these improvements were done, we've adopted Vision Zero, we've gotten much more serious about bicycle lanes and level of comfort and so forth? What does this tell us? And I also noticed in the Holworthy Street, it says one of the things done was bicycle lanes. Well, it's a painted bicycle lane, so it doesn't really calm the traffic. It just indicates where the cars can go. So I wondered kind of what you thought about this.
Ms. Rupe?
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the Vice Mayor. So, yeah, you're right. We do go back and obviously, take a look at what the data has revealed and try to learn from each of those situations. And some of them... And some of them, some of them happen to be a function of either the alignment of the street, as in the case of, of Brattle, because that section is fairly straight and it's hard to, hard to really do a whole lot. But then, or like Wholeworthy, as you're saying, that there's the downward slope. So we, but the next time that we revisit, and we also track, are we continuing to hear a lot of complaints from folks? And do we need to go back and, and revisit the street as we come through the cycle again of either the five-year plan? Because, you know, the traffic calming projects tend to get done either as part of the larger reconstruction of a street, and occasionally, much, much more minor versions as part of our spot improvement plans, which is a much smaller bucket of capital funds. But that ends up being, you know, a curb extension or something. But we're usually not able to take on significant traffic calming interventions, except through when streets are really being redone. I think that now, as we've started to, and Joe might want to add to that, as we've started to think about where are, and I won't say that either of those streets are in, in this set, but as we've started to think about other, the quick build bike facilities, certain other areas can be addressed through those. They're not really about traffic calming, though that's just a different mission. But then there are some shorter-term interventions that could be incorporated through there.
Excuse me, through, Mr. Mayor. I guess the only thing I'd add is just that, as Aram just said, you know, I think Cambridge Street's an interesting example where we didn't set out, I mean, the, the overall purpose of that project was not traffic calming per se, but because of the narrowed lanes and the, there is a chicane effect to the street because of the way the parking flip-flops from side to side, that it actually had a very significant impact, you know, bringing it down from 31 to 25 in terms of that 85th percentile speed. So I think that, you know, Brattle Street's an example where, you know, there was traffic calming done, but the street still feels relatively open, and so that's part of the issue. So I think, you know, we sort of, we learned from our experiences, obviously, you know, there's a community process associated with, and something with these projects, and sometimes they, you know, things get modified, which may or may not increase or decrease the effectiveness of the project. And then, you know, as Aram said, sometimes just the physical alignment of the street makes it very difficult to, you know, give people that sense of, of enclosure and slowing down. But again, I mean, Cambridge Street's a very straight street in and of itself, and so the changes we made, I think, do show that, that the, the sort of fairly aggressive treatments we did were successful from this perspective, not just from the separated bike lane perspective. I guess the other thing I'd say is that when we look, you know, 85th percentile speed's a good sort of quick summary of what the impacts are. We do look at, you know, outliers, so if there's, you know, if it's 85th percentile, I mean, but most people are just a little bit above that versus if it's 85th percentile, but then you have some sort of crazy numbers that go much higher and try to respond to that. So again, this isn't, it's, this is a good way of summarizing it, but it's certainly not that we only look at the 85th percentile and don't, don't look more closely at the speed data when we collect it.
Thank you. I, I think with Brattle Street, the, the problem is that it is too wide for most of the way, and that there isn't, certainly on the portion that is sort of beyond Willard Street, you know, going out toward the parkway, there aren't that many cars typically parked on either side because there isn't really a reason for most cases. Is that a place where we could consider doing, using a parking-protected bike lane to try to narrow the street as an intervention and see how it goes? It would be a relatively, I mean, I know there are curb cuts, but it's not, there aren't as many curb cuts, I don't think, as there are on a street like Cambridge Street where the houses are closer together. I mean, we just have, we have a lot continual complaints from, from people about that. And I know myself riding my bike on it a lot, it, people do push and they go fast. And often, on my bike, I end up going way over to where a car would be parked because there's no car parked there, just to get out of the way.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So I haven't looked at the exact width of Brattle Street, but I would say that in order to put in the current bike lanes that are there, that requires removing one side of parking. And I would guess that in order to install separated bike lanes, we'd have to remove both sides of parking on Brattle Street. So I guess the two things I would say to that, one is obviously that would require a lot of discussion in terms of, you know, the impacts of that, although I agree that the parking demand in that stretch is not as heavy as it is in many other locations around the city. But also, at that point, it's a, you'd have to sort of look at, okay, so that if there's no parking, yes, there's a separated bike lane with, you know, flex posts or, or at sidewalk level if we were to do it as a full reconstruction in the future, but it, it still may feel kind of open from a driver's perspective. So I think we'd have to look very carefully at, you know, understanding whether that in fact would have the desired traffic calming impact, given that without any parking, you sort of, like I said, you lose that, some of that sense of tightness, and you also lose the ability to do some of the chicanes because you don't really have any extra width to play with like we did on Cambridge Street. So again, and that's just sort of visualizing it in my head, off the top of my head, I think that this is a good, something that as we, and, you know, I think Aram has said we're putting a lot on the update of the bike plan, but I think this is the kind of thing that we need to be looking at in the feasibility analysis part of the bike plan update that we're just getting started on.
Okay, I mean, I, I can see that that might not, that the protected bike lane may not be the way to narrow the street, but I guess we're just kind of not going to be able to slow cars to even 25 miles an hour effectively without some more intervention. So I think I've corresponded with you by email with some suggestions, and I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Council Cologne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to say that I think this is an excellent report, and I think it's very informative. And I don't ever remember seeing anything like this, even as a consultant. And I congratulate both of you for putting that together. It'd be wonderful to have a list of the other prime streets like Brattle Street and, and Linian Street, or whatever you consider artery streets that lists potential ways to slow traffic, especially nearer school, which many streets have. But building on Brattle Street, it seems to me, the answer is, you do have two bike lanes, but you have a planted four-foot raised curb that's planted out. So the road is thinner. I mean, I go down Brattle all the time because I have a doctor down at the end, and it is very wide. And, and, you know, maybe you don't do it by the church per se because they need parking, but you could do it down, as the Vice Mayor said, a good length of that road. People generally don't need the parking there. It's when they have parties, they might get special permission. But you have a lot of side streets for that kind of event. And that would make a wonderful boulevard with extra trees in that planted area that would be unique and a perfect setting for that kind of street. The other thing is changing the elevation. There might be a reason why you don't want to put a raised intersection in, on Brattle, but that's how you get to 25 miles per hour if you keep maintaining that, is that's the element that does the most, the slow traffic. I worked, when I worked, had my office in East Cambridge before the rent doubled. It was amazing to me when that raised intersection went up by American Twine Building, and the first time cars went over it, they went flying, crashed coming down, you could hear the muffler getting hit. And within a month, you hardly saw anybody doing that. And if we can't do other things, it seems like those two things would promote, that is, the bike paths with the median, and I know that's money, and selective raised intersections would make a big difference. And, you know, you've used all your tools other than that. I think the pedestrian islands that are flat with asphalt do absolutely nothing. I see people driving over it unless there's planting on both sides. I know that was a previous director that oversaw that, and community development director. But, so I salute this. I think having the definitions is very helpful. I just would suggest listing all the main avenues, the arteries, that you consider arteries. And, you know, look at where the biggest problems are speed-wise. And I also want to thank you. I'm reading this and I'm going, all right, where's the 20 mile per hour comment? And it was at the end, it was a good ending, and, you know, that will raise other issues, I'm sure. But I think all of these can be done in an urban design way that really enhances the area, not just makes it look like a highway or road improvements, it could be more of a neighborhood improvement. So thank you for doing that.
Council Zondervan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you, thank you to the staff as well. I certainly agree with my colleagues, this is a really helpful report, so thank you for that. I also agree that it would be helpful to see other streets. I live near Binney Street, and, you know, it's, it's clearly too wide, and, and it's almost impossible to go 25 miles an hour on that road. It just feels like you're crawling. And I do want to highlight, as what the Vice Mayor said as well, and, and Mr. Barr, about Cambridge Street, where we put in bike lanes and had the perhaps unintended effect of slowing down traffic by a lot. So that's really a win-win, and, you know, and I hope that we can look for more opportunities like that, where we can really get both, both things at the same time. I think Binney Street is another example where we could achieve that. I was also really happy to see the, the speed limit section, and I wanted to ask about, you mentioned, in, in the spring, we will collect a representational citywide sample of pre-implementation speeds on the much larger number of streets, where the speed limit will be lower to 20 miles per hour as requested by the council. And then later on, you said, we are exploring and expect next year to have access to new data sources and tools to monitor traffic speeds across larger numbers of streets in longer time periods to better understand traffic speeds. So I, I would just love to learn a little bit more about what these new tools and mechanisms are that you'll be using, and also whether you've made any progress on determining which streets are going to be 25 miles per hour soon, at 20, excuse me, 20 miles per hour soon.
Excuse me, through, Mr. Mayor. So to, to answer your second question first, just quickly, I mean, we, I, we provide the list of all the streets that we hit at lower 20 miles per hour, obviously, but we haven't decided kind of either at this point yet what order we're going to do that in, or which streets we'll be doing the pre- and post-data collection on. But I think particularly the second thing, I think we'd like to communicate that back to the council, just so you know, once we've selected those streets, we'll, we'll, you know, through the, through some mechanism, make sure the council's aware of what's, what streets those are. In terms of the data analytics, or being able to get better data on, sort of more generally, we are investigating, and this is something that's in, I mean, it's, it's really a joint thing between my department, Community Development, and DPW, but it's in, in, in our budget for FY '20, prospectively, is to be able to, there's services out there that provide kind of anonymous access to, you know, speed and volume data based on cell phone records and things like that. And obviously, we understand that there could be concerns about the privacy, but we've, we've tried to vet these very closely. We haven't determined which, which one we're going to buy, or which one we're going to subscribe to. Basically, these provide very detailed, you know, road, road by road, segment by segment data on volume, speeds, and also travel patterns. So it gives us the ability to understand, you know, when people ask us questions about, you know, increases in traffic on their street, where's that traffic coming from, those kinds of things. So I think, you know, we actually didn't realize until we started investigating these in more detail that they also could be a valuable source of speed data, because basically in amongst all that, you can, you can pull out the speed data as well. So again, it's, it's in our, in our budget request, and I'm, you know, happy to, to discuss it more on, on Wednesday if that's appropriate, or now if that's appropriate.
Great, thank you. And I'm certainly, you know, it sounds like a really useful service, so I'm not expressing any opposition to it, but it does pique my interest because we did just pass the surveillance ordinance, and so I'm wondering what your thoughts are and how it interfaces with that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So as, as I said, I think that, you know, all the providers we've talked to, you know, it's all very heavily anonymized and just, it's not, you know, it's just sort of trip ends with no associated information. Obviously, somewhere down the chain at, you know, Verizon or whoever, they have all that information, but that's, you know, sort of several steps removed from anything we would have access to. And really, it's more of just you, you put in, I want to analyze this connection or this street, and then it spits out data from, from a portal. And that's a very, very oversimplified description of it. But I think, you know, so I, I think we, we would view it, and I have not really talked to the city solicitor in any detail about this, that we would view it as something that doesn't, that's exempt or not trigger, or does not trigger the surveillance ordinance. Nonetheless, I think we want to make sure that, you know, regardless of whether it does or does not, you know, officially require compliance, that we would, you know, try to be as, as transparent as possible about what we're doing and what the tool is, and provide people with information about it as, sort of, like I said, in as transparent a way as possible.
Great, thank you.
Pleasure to the council on placing the matter on file. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay, the ayes have it. We now move to city manager, agenda item number 10. A communication transmitted from Louis A. Di Pasquale, City Manager, relative to council order number 010 of April 22nd, 2019, regarding questions related to the draft cannabis business permitting ordinance posed in communication and reports from other city officers, number two of April 22nd, 2019. It's pulled by Councilor Zondervan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you, thank you to the city solicitors for providing this response, very helpful. I was wondering, based on, on your response, you, you highlighted regarding the exclusivity period, a potential risk that in the future, if we don't end up licensing enough cannabis establishments, we could be challenged on the, the length of that exclusionary period. I wonder if you could explain a little bit more, in particular, whether you have any guidance or thoughts on how long a period we should consider, if we are to consider an exclusionary period? And also whether the remedy at that time, if we were challenged, could simply be to end the exclusionary period at that time?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think that obviously, since this is, you know, a new law, it's a whole new area. We don't know for sure, we don't have any way to really predict things, but we just wanted to highlight that issue for the council. I think there are a couple of different ways that the council could go about it. You could either have the two-year period that was discussed previously, or I think one counselor may have suggested it, 1.5 years. Or you could not put a period, but, you know, have the intention to revisit it in a few years to sort of see how it's going. But we just wanted to highlight that issue, that that would be possible, given the standard that we can't make a cannabis business unreasonably impracticable. And nobody knows exactly what that means or how that would be interpreted, but we wanted to highlight it for you.
Great, thank you. On the RMD conversions, it wasn't entirely clear. First of all, it's not clear to me exactly which ones are licensed or registered by July 2017. Does that mean in Cambridge, at the state level? So, so if we could have a clear sense of which ones are impacted, and then based on that, whether you believe we, because it, because it says they can be regulated, so, so what does that mean in terms of if those regulations cause any delay in their opening as a, as an adult use?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just chiming because I happened to look this up earlier. The, if, according to the state's website, which lists the dates for all of the, sort of the registration dates for dates for the registered marijuana dispensaries, of the ones in Cambridge, of the six that have received special permits, five of those have received at least a provisional certificate of registration, and those were issued by the Mass. Department of Public Health. The system is, oversight has now been converted to the Cannabis Control Commission. So there are five that are within that status.
Thank you. If you could provide us with a list, or with the exact location where we can find that on the state website, that would be great. And so then, based on that, what are the constraints in terms of our ability to regulate them? So for example, if we said we would alternate between RMDs and Priority A applicants, that would potentially delay some of the RMD conversions, so would that still be in compliance with the law?
Ms. Gloua?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think, as I said in the response to question number six, if we had a delay in such a way that it would be viewed by the state as preventing conversion of a qualifying RMD that could be viewed as being in conflict with state law, but again, this is still untested. So I think that the intent is to allow the RMDs that meet that definition of ones that have been certified by the state by that date to convert and to have a retail-use cannabis store as well.
Thank you. So just to be clear, I think what you're saying is that we should not interfere or limit with the conversion of those five RMDs through this ordinance?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think, yes. Without knowing more, I think we would be doing so at our peril, given the language in the state law at this time, and without any more practical experience from rolling this program out, I would say, yes, we should not be doing things that would keep the existing licensed RMDs from having a retail cannabis establishment as well.
Thank you. And is it your understanding that the current draft language accomplishes that, or do we need to change it?
Again, through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that the language in the draft that we submitted would accomplish that. I think the language that you submitted as a proposed amendment might be in conflict with state law, so that's what I would caution with respect to that, those changes that you proposed.
Great, thank you. We've heard a lot of questions and comments about equity, social equity applicants versus economic empowerment applicants. Do you have any guidance for us there in terms of whether we should try to somehow prevent competition between them? I'm not really clear on how we would even do that. I mean, I guess we could, you know, either not include the social equity applicants as Priority A, or somehow give the economic empowerment applicants preference over the social equity applicants. But again, I'm not sure how we would practically speaking do that.
Ms. Gloua?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I really think those are policy determinations for the council. I don't think that's a legal question so much, so I really don't know what the sense of the council would be on that question.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll go to Counselor Siddiqui, but just a reminder to the council is that this is going back to ordinance, where we already have another meeting scheduled for May 9 at 5:30.
Make what I should, tentative.
Okay, it's tentative, but we're having another ordinance committee meeting at some point to get into this deeper. Counselor Siddiqui?
Thank you. Through you. I wanted to just clarify question nine. So it seems that the statute does not state that applicants must be allowed to hold its licenses in the same municipality. As of now, how many RMDs would be owned by, would have more than one license? Is it just revolutionary?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. To my knowledge, revolutionary clinics is the only entity that has two permitted and certified dispensaries in the city.
So I think, I bring that up because I think as we think about equity, it is a concern that, from others, and this is my earlier point that I brought up, I think, a few weeks ago, we don't have a cap, and we have a minimum of at least eight is the number that we have to have, correct? Or is it nine? I keep pointing back, is it eight or nine?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. It's based on the number of alcoholic beverage sort of package store licenses, and I don't know what that number is currently. When we looked at it last year, it was, I think it was 40, and so we determined it was in as 20% of that number, so we determined it was eight. I don't know what the current number is, to be honest.
Okay, that'd be helpful to have by the, if we have this next meeting. So I do think that's another policy consideration that we have to think about. As far as number six, no, I'll start with number two, actually. So this came up in our prior ordinance meeting, too, and about requiring shelf space, and right now, as written, we don't have that in the ordinance, so I think I'd be open to thinking about, if it is legal, to amending, to add that. I get that the unreasonably impracticable, that's a bar, and that's undefined, but as I'm reading here, if it's not in conflict, I think then we're okay. I know that Counselor Zondervan had proposed some amendments, and some of which I agree with. The ones that I think I don't agree with are the permitting requirements, because it does seem they're in fact legal, and I think because of the equity considerations, I think they're important, and especially with what you've written about the phase-out period, the will in there. And again, we can discuss some of those implications further, but I think from my point of view, I'd leave those in. I have a few more things, but I'll yield to some of my colleagues who I know have questions as well.
Counselor Carlo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a basic question, and then a few specific ones. The basic one, I think I know the answer, but I want to make sure. If we have 40 package stores, we need, we have to approve eight, and I would say, eight what? If someone is medicinal and non-medicinal, does that count as two? Or does that count as one license?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. My recollection of the law on this is that that number relates to adult-use retail establishments, so a medical wouldn't add to that, and another type of facility, like a cultivating or manufacturing facility, wouldn't be part of that number.
Part of the one.
Well, they would not count against that, you know, limitation on the cap.
Thank you. So as I understand from Ms. Gloua, some of the medicinals could apply and get a non-medical license, even though they've not operated for a month, six months. I mean, there'll be no track record for some of the five, or little track record of the five that have been approved. That seems, I guess the track record is strictly medicinal that we would be looking at. We would be asking questions of them as a city.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think at this time, that's what we have, because as you said, there is no track record that they would have as a retail cannabis store.
Okay, so a review period, whether it's two years or five years, would make sense. The other thing I wanted to mention, and is the number that we can do, and that's on page six, and I'm quoting, "In my opinion, a local limit on ownership would not conflict with the state statute." And you go on, unless it's more than four. So theoretically, if we wanted to spread the wealth, we could limit any company, even if they already are building two, to one, so it isn't a dominant force in the city, as I understand. That's in the middle of page number six.
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I think that's what I was saying. So I think that you can't limit it to fewer than eight in Cambridge, but, and then no one licensee can have more than this number total, but they don't have to be allowed by us to be in Cambridge.
I would encourage people to think that way. If we're really talking about spreading this future industry, and hopefully get more diversity out of that than having a big corporation run two key locations, I think that's important. Thank you, thank you. By the way, this information sheet, again, as I mentioned in the traffic and community development study, was very helpful, and it did clear up many areas. The only area, maybe we concluded it verbally, that isn't cleared up, is the strategy for making sure we have an equitable number of small businesses, local businesses, and maybe we talked about it verbally. Oh, is it in, did I miss it? That, with the hope of maximizing smaller operations, as described earlier in public comment. And I know that's a goal of some of us, maybe all of us, but it seems that we need a little clarity on that, because we already have five in the works, maybe with double ownership, only four, but it would be good to know how we could regulate that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Mayor Dever.
Thank you. Through you. I have a question, both of them, actually, two questions, both related to what we can include in a host community agreement and what we can't. One would be, could we require that an RMD continue to supply medical products if it's allowed to convert as a priority candidate? In the interest of making sure that we maintain medical, access to medical patients, is that...
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Could, can, do we have the ability to require that an existing RMD, if it's going to convert to offer adult use as well, continue to offer medical product permanently?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know the answer off the top of my head, so I can look into that before our next meeting.
Okay. Second question, also related to the host community agreements. Assuming that we meet this minimum number required, can the manager, is the manager essentially the sort of backstop if a location meets the zoning technically, fulfills its other things, but may not be necessarily the best thing for a certain location, either because there are too many in one block, or it may just not be the ideal location for other neighborhood reasons? Is that, once we get to the eight, is that reason to say, I'm sorry, I just, you know, I don't think that's the right place for this store at this time?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that that's, that should be guidance given by the council to the manager as far as making discretionary determinations like that.
And how would we give that guidance? Is that something that, I mean, it's sort of like having design guidelines in zoning. How would we do that?
Again, through you, Mr. Mayor. I think that there could be perhaps some additional language put into the ordinance at this time, or as it evolves and questions arise, there could be a council order and, you know, saying the council would like to do this, and direct the manager, and if the manager had a concern that the council didn't think of, the manager could come back and report to the council. But I think the basic policy position on this should be coming from the council to the manager.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Allan?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you, Ms. Gloua. I was not able to attend the last ordinance committee hearing, so this is very helpful. Thank you for putting this together, and thanks to all the counselors who are there asking these great questions. I have a couple of questions around RMD conversions. Counselor Zondervan covered most of them, but I still have a question around, you know, it says, "Therefore, there's not local discretion to prevent such conversions, although the city may regulate them." I'm just wondering if you can expand on that. I just, I'm not totally clear what regulations we can put in place, and what that might look like when you wrote, it's number five, the answer to number five.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say that these are very dense issues and very complex, so I'm not sure I can answer additional questions, all of them off the top of my head tonight, but I can certainly take note of questions and report back at the next committee meeting, so that would probably be my preference.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I appreciate that. I could definitely put these questions into an email so that we have them for whenever the ordinance committee hearing is. Just following up on the Vice Mayor's question around requiring medical, existing medical RMDs to still supply medical marijuana or cannabis, once they receive an adult-use permit. Is that something that we can mandate a percentage of? I mean, it would be really easy to say, you know, just have a small shelf of medical cannabis and say we were complying. Is that something that we can actually put into regulations?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Good question, and again, I'd be happy to look into that and report back to the council.
Thank you. And then my last question slash point would be, I agree with Counselor Siddiqui around the shelf space, if that's something that we can do legally. I think we should definitely think about doing it. Again, I'm going to go back to a percentage and see if there's, if it's possible that we could mandate a percentage, perhaps like a rolling percentage, as these social equity applicants get up and running, and there's more of them available. I would just like to know if there's something that we can put into it to ensure a shelf space, not just a nominal shelf space, and perhaps even a growing shelf space. So I'm fine with having that answer at the next ordinance committee hearing. Again, thank you for putting this together.
Counselor Toomey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, Ms. Gloua. Can you, on December 17, 2018, the City Council adopted the ordinance for the regulation of cannabis establishments. Can you just go over what, did that establish where the zoning for these establishments is? I'm just trying to recollect exactly what was that ordination?
Yes, through you, Mr. Mayor.
So that was where these recreational dispensaries could be located, am I correct?
Correct.
So that was three months ago now. So now you're suggesting we change that, and if people have concern about where they're going to be located, and the question is that the, there are, I think I have, I believe 11 proposed dispensaries that have been in the works. So, and by changing that, after they're... So, and by changing that, after they've applied, is that some kind of, is that legally that we can do that, after they've played by the rules and applying it where the council voted, and I voted no on that, but where they could be located now, we're going to change the rules midstream? Is that legal, I guess is my question?
So, through you, Mr. Mayor. If you're talking about amending the zoning ordinance, then that can be done anytime by the council, anytime that there's an appropriate reason to amend the zoning ordinance. So if there are different considerations that the council has in mind now, you could amend it. The business permitting ordinance is separate from the zoning ordinance, but the zoning ordinance could be amended as well.
I just want to make the clarification. So we could change where these, so the people who play by the rules that we adopted, 11 of them now, if we change it, the money that they've invested in legal and probably site buying and all that, I'm just curious what repercussions they would have against the city, is what my question is, I guess. If there is any, if there is not, there is not. And I'd just like to know as we proceed on this.
So through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm not sure I was understanding. So if you're talking about the ones that are permitted, then no, you can't take away permits that people already have, but it would be rezoning with respect to future applicants that would be permissible.
So the list I have here, most of them I have, I guess, do we have an answer just, of the 11 that I have here, I don't have a copy, but if you want to look at it, of these that have been proposed, which, how many, was it five you said, or six that have been approved?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask CDD to answer that question. I think that Jeff originally answered about the five, but perhaps they can clarify this.
Just to make it, Mr. Mayor, and just to make it easy, just the ones who have been permitted, that those locations that they've, can we now change the rules and say you can't go there? I guess that's my question.
Sure. Through you, Mr. Mayor, to Councilor Toomey. So, Councilor Toomey, there are, the piece of the regulation that the council adopted is the zoning, just the zoning piece, which says, here are the parts of the city where cannabis retail could be, establishments could be located. That zoning, in fact, references a few other elements. One is a business license, a city-level business license. There's also a state-level, sorry, a business permit at the city level. There's also a state-level license that's issued through the Cannabis Control Commission. And then finally, the city has to sign a host community agreement with each operator, a retail operator. So there's four different elements that are at play with every single one of these retailers. And the only regulation that we have adopted so far is the zoning. So this, everybody who is going through the process was even at that time aware of the fact that the city would be considering additional permitting requirements, and some of the issues that are being talked about today were under discussion at that time, but not, certainly not resolved fully. So I think people did know, were aware, were on notice that there would be additional regulation that the city would be working on and what the nature of it would be. So hopefully, those folks will not be surprised. But they are doing, the process that they're going through is partly for their zoning permits, because as of the 20th of April, the zoning, they were able to, you know, they were authorized to go forward and apply for a special permit. And that pre-proposal community meeting is what those, the ones that have been scheduled. Then the five, and Jeff can add more to this, the five medical establishments, those licenses are related to their state authorization to also serve as retail location in addition to their medical operations. So there's a lot, there's many different pieces at play in this case. Jeff, do you want to add to that?
No, I guess just to maybe reiterate and state a little bit of the, just the information. So there are, is a number of operators, potential operators, that have been hosting community meetings. That's part of the process required, both by the planning board and by the State Cannabis Control Commission. At this point, we don't have a complete special permit application from any of those applicants, unless something came in in the 20 minutes I've been up here. So none of them have begun the process, and even after they begin the application process, they would still need to go to the planning board and go through the process of getting a special permit. Of those operators, I believe two or maybe three of them are existing medical marijuana dispensaries that will be seeking both a special permit and ultimately a license to add adult use cannabis sales. The others are not, are not yet permitted as any kind of cannabis use.
Mr. Mayor, just a follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Robbiskin. Do you know if, and the ones that were approved for the medical now that they're going for the, which locations those are?
The two that I know, and there may be one that I'm forgetting, is the Sierra Naturals, 1001 Massachusetts Avenue, is a active medical marijuana dispensary. And I believe 110 Fawcett Street, that's Revolutionary Clinics, is also a existing medical marijuana dispensary.
Thank you. I guess my point, and Ms. Rourke, you talked about additional requirements, but I'm just trying to get to understand that a requirement might be something different than the zoning location. I guess that's my concern, is that we adopted that zoning, that this is where they can go, and now we possibly can change the rules. I just want to make sure that that is within our legal bounds to do that, so. But I will follow up, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilor Siddiqui.
One more question about the, what was it, the residential component? I know that Councilor Zondervan has put in 50% area media income in that section, and the response mentioned the areas of designated neighborhood revitalization strategy areas. And I think the concern was someone can move in there and then qualify. Again, I assume that you'd say that's potentially a policy decision, whether we want to go with AMI versus this broad category. I think I'm just trying to play this out, if it's, you know, where is the, where are these areas? Is one better than the other? I don't know. So I'm wondering if you guys have any guidance on that? Is there, prevent some of the, for example, the worry that we have if someone, you know, moves into the said neighborhood revitalization strategy area to take benefit? I guess we could probably put something in there that would prevent that.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think ultimately, this is probably a question that the solicitor will need to weigh in on, but I would imagine that if you really wanted to prevent somebody moving in, one could have a particular date that they have lived there as of such and such date, or have lived there for a certain period of time before they can apply. And that may be a way to demonstrate that they didn't just move in to qualify.
And then I think some of us have raised additional questions related to the host community agreements. And I think what I would like to see is if these questions, I think some of them, you know, we have some agreement around, okay, shelf space is good, perhaps there's certain things we can put in the HCA. I just don't want to get to the next meeting and then have more meetings and more meetings. I think we're getting, we're getting close. So I'm wondering how best we can, I think there's some things we could probably vote on tonight to give some guidance, to get some new language before us. So maybe we should do that. And then the remainder, the questions, then we can get to that by the next meeting. And yeah, that's what the game plan I'm thinking. Thanks.
Councilor Zondervan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, to my colleague, I agree that it would be good to get as much clarity as we can tonight, so that we can go into the ordinance committee as close as possible to some kind of consensus. I would say on the question that you asked regarding income versus location, you know, my concern is that we can try to constrain the location, so we could say, you know, that somebody had to have been a resident for at least a year or since a certain date. But I still worry that it creates a potential loophole, even to the point where, you know, someone who wants to take advantage of that opportunity could pay someone to apply on their behalf and be sort of the front applicant. You know, so I think we just want to think really carefully about inadvertently creating ways for the money to flow in, because it wants to do that. Whereas if we base it on residency and income, you know, it's harder for somebody to use that, to take advantage of that, to gain a foothold in the industry unfairly in a way. I also, in terms of the exclusionary period, I guess I would like to advocate for making it indefinite. And the thought is that recognizing the risk that the solicitor highlights in terms of not achieving the minimum number of establishments, we could guess at how long it might take us to get there, but it would always be a guess. And so if we said 10 years, we could still face a challenge in year five, where we haven't achieved enough establishments and somebody challenges us in that way. And I believe that, as the solicitor indicated, that if and when such a challenge were to happen, the council at that time could remedy it by lifting the exclusionary period. So essentially, we don't lose anything by making it indefinite, and then if for whatever reason it doesn't work out, in the future, it can always be adjusted. And that frees us from having to anticipate how the marketplace would operate once the exclusion is lifted. We can essentially leave that to a future council to decide and decide now how we can maximally benefit the equity applicants during the exclusionary period, however long it ends up lasting. And that also potentially creates opportunities for us to simplify the ordinance, because we don't have to anticipate what should happen once the exclusionary period expires. So I just offer that as a possible way to approach this. I'm not opposed to a particular length of time. I just think it's an opportunity, if we make it indefinite, to simplify the ordinance and to maximize the benefit to the equity applicants.
So I'm going to chime in here. I think we could ponder, ask questions, think about all of this forever. And I really want to, you know, take in what folks said in public comment. I mean, you know, we have some of the EE applicants that are paying $6,000 a month for rent for storefronts they can't use until we get this figured out and they can get host agreements. And so we're not helping them any by trying to figure out, do you not agree with that? You're shaking your head.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, the, because we did approve the zoning and it took effect on April 20th, I do believe the applicants are able to move forward.
They can't move forward, EE applicants cannot move forward without a host agreement. And so until we figure that out and get these host agreements in place, they can't move forward. They can have the space, but they need a host agreement.
Right, but the ordinance that we're contemplating doesn't regulate host community agreements?
Well, yes. And we're not giving out host community agreements at this time until we get this, until we get this done. So I don't think we're helping them any necessarily by trying to get this perfect. And so at some point, we have good discussions and good questions. At some point, someone's going to have to make an amendment, a motion, and we're going to have to, we're going to have to vote on it. So, you know, we should probably do that, you know, in the ordinance committee meeting. I think it would be beneficial if folks plan on making amendments. The meeting, the ordinance committee meeting is tentatively May 9th. We meet again on May 6th. Excuse me. If folks could, maybe through communications from other city officers for the next council meeting, indicate what amendments they would like to make, so at least we can get, we can see those a few days ahead of time. So when we hit the ordinance committee meeting, you know, we have, the amendments aren't being brought up on the floor. But again, I do think, you know, I agree with some of the, with the public speakers that, you know, let's move this, we're going to have to revise it, we're never going to answer, get perfect answers to all these questions. You know, as far as the shelf space goes, I think, Councilor Allan brought up a good point. You know, my initial question was, are there enough EE applicants that have supplies that you can have, 51% of your store? And is it a rolling thing as this? I mean, you know, we can, in our earnest, to make sure we're doing everything we can for EE applicants, I don't want us to set something up that's not doable and set this up to fail either. So I think we should, you know, submit, share what we want to do for amendments, and then people can see them ahead of time. We debate them on May 9th, if that's the date that happens, and we move it. We make those amendments on the floor then. I'm going to go, I'm going to go to the vice mayor, and then Councilor Carlon, and then come back to Councilor Zondervan.
Thank you. I just have a quick question. So we've received by email, and some people received a printed copy of this, I don't know if it's a petition or a proposal for a way to define social equity, a social equity program in Cambridge.
Yeah, it wasn't, it wasn't a petition, it's just a...
Well, somebody alluded to it having been signed by, you know, many residents. And so I'm just trying to understand sort of what that is and what we're supposed to, how we're supposed to consider that.
I think if I understand it correctly, I don't think he said it was signed. I think he said that he met with other EE applicants and they agreed that what he had submitted to us was okay with them. So it wasn't an official petition. I think it was just a communication to us, like, for things for us to think about.
Okay. So it would be a different definition? It's up to the city to define its own definition of what a social equity program is? I mean, the state seems to have very specific language for the economic empowerment.
I don't think it's to define, I think it's a question of, are we going to consider them both priorities on equal levels? And there are, the hoops for EE applicants are much more stringent than social equity applicants. I'm getting all my names... And so there's some, you know, for example, one of the things that I didn't know that I learned is, you know, to be considered a social equity applicant, you can go to this training that the state does, and then they, they just say, okay, you're a social equity applicant. And so it's not quite the same as minority applicants or EE applicants. And so the question becomes, do we want to group them all together to give them all the equal priority? Or are we going to put EE applicants above them as well? So it's not really defining what they are, it's just more defining where we put them in terms of our priority, you know, A, B, C, D, whatever we end up with.
Okay.
Yeah. Counselor Carlon?
Mr. Mayor, we're almost certain to pass a version of this ordinance in May. But we've asked a number of questions and for us to discuss all those questions on May 9th means the Law Department has to return an answer within a week or a week. And I don't know if that's possible, but whatever the return, the question, the answers to the questions we've generated, we're going to need at least three days to make concrete discussions and recommendations for revisions. And I come back to equity versus corporate and how can we make sure that people who are in the social equity edge of this discussion are fully represented or have the opportunity at least? And to me, that is the basic question and we're not there yet on that. So my own feeling, if it turns out to be May 29 or something like that, whatever the date is, so be it. We're talking about a few weeks and there are still so many questions, you heard them all tonight, that need to be resolved. I am on no May 9th decision on this by any stretch of the imagination. And I know you proposed that, we're going to get there and it's going to be next month. I'm certain of that, but I don't think it's going to be the early part of the month.
We shall see. Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did want to add a couple of comments. First of all, I don't want to appear to be arguing against urgency. I completely agree with you that we should move this forward as quickly as we can. I was just questioning whether they are truly held up. If we continue it as long as perhaps Counselor Carlon is suggesting, we may well start to cause a problem. So I do agree that we should move forward as quickly as we can. To answer the Vice Mayor's question, I believe the proposal was trying to define social equity applicants for Cambridge specifically, in part to include residents, for example, which is not part of the state definition, and was also trying to establish some way to achieve fairness between social equity, so defined and economic empowerment applicants. The economic empowerment program is already closed, so there can't be any new ones. So these are only existing ones who have qualified. And personally, I struggle to figure out how we would establish some kind of fairness between them, but we'll leave that for later. And then to get our questions answered as quickly as possible, should we do an order tonight, right now, to ask the legal department to provide some answers by next week?
Ms. Loa? Do we come back to this question of do we need an official motion to ask you to answer these questions or...
Well, Mr. Mayor, you do in fact procedurally need an official motion. We did also start working on these questions the moment they were passed by the council on April 11th, but this agenda needs to be submitted by Thursday midday at the latest for Monday night. And for us to answer a whole bunch more complex questions in two business days would be very challenging. So we will do what we can.
So we can file a motion asking you to answer these questions, but just not give you a date in which to...
Or you can ask for it to be by a certain date and we'll do our very best to get back to you as soon as we can, which we did this last time. And we'll make every effort to do so. I'm just saying that there are some limitations if there's not very much time between, you know, one Monday night and a Thursday morning is two and a half business days, so.
Counselor Shidik?
Can it be a late calendar item for Monday? Just saying. I wanted to just clarify something. So the social equity, the way the state defines it, it's a program. And so it's a program for applicants. And so to your point, so applicants and licensees are eligible for the social equity program if they demonstrate at least one of three criteria. So I think to the Vice Mayor's point, the points that are raised in the communications we've received, it, I think, is up to us whether we want to make some amendments to be further proposed in the cannabis business, in the ordinance.
Pleasure of the council.
So moved?
So I think Counselor Zondervan is making a motion asking the city manager to direct the city solicitor to answer the questions raised at tonight's meeting as soon as possible. That's what you said. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The question on the city manager's report comes on referring this report to unfinished business item number six. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Thank you. We now move to calendar items. Pleasure of the council. Counselor Toomey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Remove calendar item number one that I chatted, wrote. I'll just be very brief. I'm going to place it on file. I'm sort of surprised, and I understand the staff is very, very busy.
Hold on, let's see what else we've got. Pull number two, somebody? Counselor Carlon?
Yes, I'm pulling number two.
Counselor Malin?
Number seven, please.
Mr. Mayor, number five, please.
And I think the others are still, there's no action. Okay, so we will now go back to number one. A communication transmitted from Louis A. De Pasquale, city manager, relative to awaiting report item number 18-127 regarding draft zoning for urban farming, awaiting report item number 19-23 regarding allowing lodging houses in residential A1, A2, and B zoning districts, and awaiting report item number 19-28 regarding a timetable for updating retail and small business components of the zoning table of uses. Counselor Toomey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll just comment on awaiting report item number 19-23, which is the one I submitted. And I understand that the staff is very busy. I thought this was sort of a simple change for the ordinance and will follow up with Community Development Department and perhaps in the future submit a separate ordinance from revision from the city council. But so on the other two, I'm not familiar with and I'm not sure who put those in, but the one that I submitted, I will follow up Community Development Department.
Thank you.
There's no other comments, I'll place that, the communication on file.
Any other comments? I'm placing the matter on file. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. We now go to charter right number two. An application was received from Naal Hanley requesting permission for a curb cut at the premises numbered 60 Porter Road. Said petition has received approval from Inspection Services, Traffic Parking and Transportation, Historical Commission, and Public Works. No response has been received from the Neighborhood Association. Counselor Carlon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I went out and looked at the site and studied the site plan and it's extremely straightforward. And I encourage everyone to vote for the curb cut.
Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that my position may not be very popular tonight and I drove here, so I understand that we still live in a city dominated by cars despite our best efforts. And I understand that this particular curb cut is not going to change any of that. But on principle, I cannot vote for this particular curb cut and I'm not necessarily asking my colleagues to vote with me. I'm just putting forward my case for why I think this is an example of the kinds of curb cuts and policies in general that we should think differently on. First of all and foremost, it is not 15 feet from the crosswalk. And I understand how one could make it seem so that it were, but if you look at the picture, you have to measure from inside the crosswalk in order to get to 15 feet. If you measure from the edge of the crosswalk, which I presume is the point of having a distance from the crosswalk, it's from the edge, not from the center, then it is not possible to get it to 15 feet from the crosswalk. This particular home, as has been stated in public comment, has been there for 60 years. It is within shouting distance of the Porter Square T Station and it has not had a curb cut for all of that time. So all the people who've lived there over that time have done so without parking their cars on the property. The front setback is not very deep, it's right up on the street. It does have a nice little yard that could use a tree, but it's very easy to get from the house to a car in the street. The parking spot in front of the house has already been removed and I think that is a good thing because it improves the safety, but it could be used for pickup and drop off if somebody did need to use a car to access the home. And in terms of the on-street parking, as I put a memo on the agenda last week, based on the CDD data, it's pretty clear that the residential permits are actually declining over the last few years. They're not increasing. So I did go by the site, of course, and measured it and it is a very congested area. There are a lot of cars parked on that street, but we can expect over time that that demand is going to continue to decline. So at some point, if we're going to truly get away from being car-oriented, we have to start saying no to adding infrastructure that supports more cars in our city. And I think this is a perfect example of that case. So I'll be voting no. Thank you.
Counselor Malin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. I will be voting yes tonight for this curb cut. I am delighted to do so, in fact. And I, the somewhat constant principal policing for what people can do on their own property in this chamber is really frustrating around curb cuts. It's micromanaging curb cut applications and it's undermining the staff, the number of staff that went through and worked diligently, went out there and did what they needed to do. This went through zoning, through GPW, through traffic and parking, through ISD, six different neighbors. Starting in July of 2018, these neighbors, these applicants have gone out to their neighbors and asked if they could have a curb cut and received a favorable review. This was approved a month ago, March 22nd, and it's now been delayed. So I am delighted to vote for this curb cut, as I am most nights, but I want to register my dissatisfaction of the constant micromanaging of curb cuts that happens on Monday nights here by one of my colleagues. Thank you.
Pleasure of the council. Counselor Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to vote for this as well. I would take issue with the data about declining car permits. It's reasonably flat and recent data shows it's bumped up a little bit, but cars aren't going anywhere anytime soon. The neighbors don't have a problem with this particular curb cut and hence neither do I. But we do, as counselors, we don't just have the authority, we have the responsibility to vote on these. So if we wanted not to have that authority and have it be a popularity contest with the neighbors or the various city agencies sign off on it and so forth and have that be the end of the discussion, that would be fine, but then it shouldn't come to us for a vote. We should never vote on something simply yes or no because other people have said we like this or we don't like this. It's come to us to vote whatever it is that we feel. So while I disagree with Counselor Zondervan on most of the issues he just raised about this curb cut, I don't disagree with the idea that in principle we should vote yes or no as we see fit based on the input that we've received from other people, but not making that input dispositive.
Pleasure of the council.
Should we vote on?
Counselor Carlon?
I just wanted to add that the curb cut sign off is based on zoning, it's based on traffic and parking, and it's based on Public Works, meaning their standards. The city clerk, of course, receives it and makes sure that it's a complete application. But it isn't just because other people think it's fine, it's based on code and regulations. And that's why we have that responsibility, I'm not sure, but nevertheless, it's based on fact, not just an opinion of folks. And that is challenged every now and then if, in fact, I remember in Cambridgeport in my first term, we rejected a proposal because it was going to eat up the whole yard with one car in front of the other. So we do have expertise reviewing this and they help inform us on whether or not it works. And many of the ones that don't work never even come to us for obvious reasons. Thank you.
All right. So I, you know, I certainly respect Counselor Zondervan or anybody in this chamber's right to vote however they feel. You know, I do think though, when all the city departments and the professionals that look at this approve it and the butters approve it, these are ones I think should be slam dunks for us. But we will, everyone of course has the right to vote however they feel. Counselor Zondervan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the feedback. I do want to point out that concerns were raised about this particular curb cut by a neighbor. So it's not, you know, true that all the neighbors approve. Somebody alerted me to the issues with this particular curb cut and that's why I had to take a look. And I appreciate Counselor Kelly's stating that we do have this power and if we don't want to have this power, then we should change the law. But as long as we do have the power, I think we should take it seriously and, you know, if some of us have issues with a particular curb cut, that's our prescribed power to raise them. Thank you.
All right. So let's vote. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Counselor Zondervan is recognized in the negative and the curb cut passes. We now move to unfinished business number five. An application was received from Citizens Bank requesting permission for a one illuminated projecting sign and seven awnings at the premises numbered 822 Somerville Avenue. Approval has been received from Inspection Services, Department of Public Works, Community Development Department, and no butler response. Vice Mayor?
Thank you. We had a communication from Ruth Riles of the Porter Square Neighborhood Association that they had had extensive meetings with Citizens Bank. They've really scaled back the treatment of their branding and so forth on this facade. And so now the Neighborhood Association has approved it, so I think that we should approve it.
Quick question. They approved, is this what's on unfinished, what we're about to vote on, is that the revised, the application that the Porter Square Neighborhood Association wants or is it the old one?
I think what's on our...
It was put on, according to the clerk, it was put on unfinished business because the neighborhood had not approved it. So if they entered into some negotiations and came up with something different, I don't want to vote on the wrong one.
Okay, well then I don't know, then I'm not sure what, then I'm not sure what to do because we were sent, I did see a copy of what they wanted to do, but maybe it has, Citizens Bank hasn't formally submitted it. The clerk can tell us. I thought that the reason we were given this communication from the clerk's office was so that we could say that the neighborhood had now approved it.
Yes. 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 Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the vice mayor. That's correct. We had not, it was not approved by the Neighborhood Association, but the company, the sign company, and the Neighborhood Association have come to an agreement. So, we were holding up, waiting for the Neighborhood Association approval, and they have approved it.
So, but I think, and that was my understanding, but I think to the mayor's point, it isn't what is on here. It is less than what's on here. So...
Right. Right. That's my question, is I think, I think that's what I'm unclear about. They clear, I don't believe that the Neighborhood Association approved the illuminated projecting sign and seven awnings, which is what we're being asked to vote on. They approved something that they negotiated with Citizens Bank, and I have no idea what that is, and that's not in front of us. So...
How procedurally can we communicate to Citizens Bank? Do they need to file a new sign application? Because I believe this one had been approved by all of the city staff. So, if what they're doing is less, essentially, less signage, there's no reason to believe that the city staff would find a reason not to approve.
Right. We don't have anything in...
I'm just trying to help here. I don't know.
We don't have anything in front of us to even amend what's on unfinished business. So, I think we leave it here. We'll figure it out. We'll talk to Citizens Bank and...
Okay. So, I can leave that in the clerk's able hands to figure out what procedurally. Thank you.
Okay. We now move on to number seven. A communication was received from Donna P. Lopez, City Clerk, transmitting a report from Counselor Dennis J. Carlon and Counselor Craig A. Kelly, co-chairs of the Ordinance Committee for a public hearing held on March 27th, 2019, to discuss zoning petition filed by Melissa and Christopher Gruppo et al. to amend the zoning ordinance by adding at the end of Section 5.3.11, a sentence that reads, "Notwithstanding the foregoing, in Industry B District, a hotel use Section 4.31.2 shall be governed by the Section Number 4.0 for purposes of determining the maximum ratio of floor area to lot area." Counselor Mallon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. So, this petition had brought approval in the Ordinance Committee hearing, and given that it is April 29th, and the question comes on passage to be ordained, I'd like to move ordination of this petition.
Discussion. Counselor Carlon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To concur with Counselor Mallon, there was a very relatively short meeting on this, and given the oddity of this site, a pie-shaped site, this project was actually improved with this increase to a housing FAR. It was downzoned to promote housing, and a previous housing project never could get going on this site. And there's only one other site that's logical where this could apply, and it was concluded by Community Development. If that happened, it would be a good thing to have another hotel at a different site. So, I concur with my fellow counselor. This should be approved as soon as we can.
Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree as well. This is in my neighborhood. I can practically see the spot from my window, almost. And I look forward to it becoming a hotel, which will be an improvement over the vacant former used car sales lot and the former MS Pizza, which we do miss, but it's been gone for a while.
Pleasure to the counsel. On adoption, all those in favor, what? Passage to be...
Ordination. Counselor Calone.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Deveraux.
Yes.
Counselor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Mallon.
Yes.
Counselor Siddiqui.
Yes.
Counselor Simmons.
Yes.
Counselor Toomey.
Yes.
Mayor McGovern.
Yes.
And the petition is ordained on an affirmative vote with nine in favor.
We now move on to applications. Pleasure to the counsel. Counselor Zondervan.
Number two.
On adopting number one, all those in favor say aye, those oppose nay. The ayes have it. We move to number two. A petition was received from Aubrey Berkowitz and Elan Levy petitioning say no to an Eversource substation by the Kennedy Longfellow School. Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had the pleasure of attending the East Cambridge Planning Team meeting last week, along with Vice Mayor Deveraux, and hearing from Eversource on the challenges of trying to meet our electrical demand, particularly in Kendall Square, which is what they're trying to do with the substation. And while I fully appreciate the need for electrical infrastructure, I think it's frankly absurd that it's being proposed in the residential neighborhood rather than on the commercial properties that are, in fact, generating all this demand in Kendall Square. So, I hope that we can work together as a council on maximally opposing this particular location and putting pressure on primarily the developers in Kendall Square to work with Eversource to help them locate an alternative solution. One of the many appalling things that was said during the meeting by Eversource was that they didn't know who to call at MIT to talk about this. And that was just stunning. I mean, for them to be in charge of this infrastructure in our city and to propose it in a residential neighborhood, and then when we say, if you talk to MIT, for them to reply, "We don't even know who to call," is pretty stunning to me. So, I think Eversource needs our help to resolve this issue in a way that's equitable and fair to our community and to this neighborhood, which is not responsible for the increased demand that is generating the need for this substation. Thank you.
Pleasure to the counsel. I'll just say, we heard a public comment that the counsel hasn't been clear enough or individual. So, let me just be really clear. I think this is a stupid and unreasonable place to put this substation, and I think it needs to move. So, I hope that that's clear enough for folks in the audience. Pleasure to the counsel. Counselor Siddiqui.
And we do have a meeting coming up, right? So, May 22nd. So, encourage everyone to come to it.
So, we need to refer this to the city manager. All those in favor say aye, those oppose nay. The ayes have it. We now move to communications on a motion by, oh, right, I'm sorry. We have to, we have a, we want to do this at the end. Okay. I guess we can do it here. Move suspension to bring forward a late application. On suspension, all those in favor say aye, those oppose nay.
I'm a no, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Kelly is a no. We are in, it's apparently time-sensitive, but the ayes have it. We are in suspension. The late application reaches follows. An application was received from Women in Comedy Festival and Cambridge Arts Council requesting permission for a temporary banner across JFK Street at Mount Auburn Street announcing the Women in Comedy Festival on April 30th, 2019 through May 6th, 2019. Discussion.
I'm performing, so, I'm just kidding. I'm just kidding.
On adoption, all those in favor say aye, those oppose nay. The ayes have it. Now, we move to communications. On a motion by Counselor Simmons to bring communications before us for discussion and adoption, all those in favor say aye, those oppose nay. The ayes have it. Counselor Zondervan, I believe you wanted to pull one communication.
Number 10, please.
On placing one through nine on file, all those in favor say aye, those oppose nay. The ayes have it. We go back to communication number 10. A communication was received from the Department of Public Utilities, transmitting year ended December 31st, 2018, condensed financial return for N-Star Gas Company. Counselor Zondervan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe it's labeled number nine in our book.
Oh, wait.
Nine and 10.
Nine and 10.
Oh, okay. There.
Oh, there are two different ones. One's electric and one's, okay. You wanted, you pulled 10, but...
I wanted number 10, which is on natural gas. I'm just, very briefly, just want to highlight this report by Eversource, which by my calculation shows roughly an 11% profit on operating natural gas infrastructure of $38 million profit. And we also have on the agenda a resolution for divest Harvard in support of their efforts to divest from investments in fossil fuels. And I just want to highlight that these natural gas utilities are regulated monopolies. They are profitable to their investors. And so, there is an inherent tension there between our attempts to divest from this infrastructure, which causes climate change, and the intentions of investors to make a profit. So, it's really important to keep that in mind as we move forward in trying to address climate change. How do we separate ourselves from these types of investments so that they don't continue? The utility has a $38 million profit, and yet there are many gas leaks in our community and throughout the state that are not repaired, that are adding further to the problem of climate change, even beyond the consumption of natural gas. So, I just want to highlight that, you know, we receive these reports and we gloss over them, but there's a real pressure in our society to continue operating these utilities in this way, which continues to worsen the problem of climate change that we're at the same time trying to counteract. Thank you.
Pleasure to the counsel. On placing the matter on file, all those in favor say aye, those oppose nay. The ayes have it. We now move to resolutions on a motion by Counselor Mallon to bring resolutions before us for discussion and adoption, making unanimous upon adoption. All those in favor say aye, those oppose nay. The ayes have it. Counselor Simmons.
One, two, and four.
Counselor Zondervan.
Eleven.
Number 16, please.
On the balance, on adoption, making unanimous upon adoption, all those in favor say aye, those oppose nay. The ayes have it. We move back to resolution number one, a resolution on the death of Cheryl Ann Pizzazoli, filed by Counselor Simmons, Counselor Toomey, and myself. Counselor Simmons.
Thank you. There, they said, it is said that if you say a person's name that passes along, they never really leave you. And so, I wanted to take this opportunity to say Cheryl Ann Pizzazoli's name as many times as possible, because it's a shame that she has to leave us, and so that she never is forgotten. I'm going to just take a moment to read not everything, but some excerpts from the policy order, because for someone that we've, I ain't particularly spent so much time with, I realized there was so much more about her to have known. And so, it reads as follows, "The city council was deeply saddened to learn of the passing of longtime Cambridge resident, affordable housing activist, founding member of the Alliance of Cambridge Tenant, and esteemed member of the Affordable Housing Trust, Cheryl Ann Pizzazoli on April 23rd, 2019. And whereas Cheryl Ann Pizzazoli was born on October 27, 1957, to Nicholas Pizzazoli Sr. and Phyllis P. Pizzazoli, she grew up in Brockton, attended Brockton Public Schools, went on to earn a BA in Philosophy from Williams College, and MSED in Secondary Social Studies from Simmons College Arts and Sciences, and Graduate Studies and a BA in Community Planning from the University of Massachusetts College of Public and Community Service." It goes on to say that whereas Cheryl Ann would recall the mid-1990s, and she says, I quote, "I went from being a tenant living in at-risk housing in the post-rank control Cambridge to doing research and state policy advocacy work and tenant organizing, which resulted in the passage of a state law 40," that she stated, "I realized the importance of having the people who are most directly affected by a policy sitting at the table where decisions are made about the future of their housing," which is what led me to my being one of the founding members of the Cambridge Citywide Expiring Use Tenant Committee, a participant group at the Cambridge Economic Opportunity Commission. And then going further on, "And whereas for six-year Cheryl Ann served as both ACT's voucher co-chair and the chair of ACT's Policy Committee, during which time the organization was actively involved in a wide range of policy issues, most importantly, the CHA conversion of nearly all of its public housing stock to project-based vouchers assistance under RED while maintaining tenants' existing rights and protections. ACT worked with tenants to negotiate individual relocation agreements for their buildings. ACT spent nine months negotiating a new CHA lease. ACT consulted with CHA on four key policy documents, and ACT worked with the CHA to establish a pool of trained voucher and public housing tenant panelists to serve on the CHA's conference in grievance appearance. And moving further along, whereas as a member of the trust and as advisor to the city council, Cheryl Ann played a key role in writing the city's comprehensive housing plan, which was forwarded to the city council in September 2017. And she was also one of the trust representatives on the Cambridge Envision Planning Process Housing and Working Group." Moving on to the last, whereas Cheryl Ann worked tirelessly on behalf of the causes she cared so deeply about. And thanks to her work, untold number of Cambridge residents now and for generations to come shall have a safe, secure, and affordable home in this community that otherwise might not have been available to them. And the city of Cambridge is a far better place for having her lived and worked here. What's important to say, if you think of, if you read through that and just look at it from the perspective of the timeline, Cheryl Ann was sick most of the time. Most of that time, she was really sick, but she was just driven. She was driven to do the right work for the right people all of the time. And I think she's just an exemplary model of what we all should aspire to be. We didn't have time in getting this ready for this meeting to put the next order in, which would be a suitable memorial for that. And I hope my colleagues will stand with me, you know, when that comes forward. But she, she was just an amazing woman. She always amazed me at all the energies that she had. And even when she was in hospice, she was still talking about housing policy in Cambridge. So, I hope my colleagues will stand in support.
Thank you. And I'll just, you know, I obviously didn't know her as long as Counselor Simmons or Counselor Toomey. Just really gotten to know her over the last seven years. What's kind of funny is I'm sure that she'd probably be saying, "Don't, what are you doing congratulating me and thanking me and acknowledging me?" Right? Because that's never what it was about for her. And, you know, it's going to be a huge, it's a huge loss for this community and for affordable housing advocates and tenant rights advocates. It's really, it's really sad. And she really gave everything to this city and to the people that she tried to help. So... Pleasure to the counsel. Counselor Mallon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Counselor Simmons, Counselor Toomey, and the mayor for putting this in. I feel like I knew she was really sick, but her death still came as quite a shock because she's such a force of nature. And I thought, surely she'll be with us forever, fighting and advocating for what's important, and that's making sure that the most vulnerable residents among us are taken care of. I have appreciated everyone's talking about her, because I have all this verbiage now where I feel like I have quotes that she has that I think will stay with me and will carry through and make it feel like she's always with us and next to us as we move through a number of affordable housing things where, you know, we're really trying to protect people. The one thing I really loved about her was that she was always the seat and the voice at the table for those who couldn't be there. And that's so critical in this conversation and many conversations we have about vulnerable residents. It's really critical to have someone who has a lived experience and has the authenticity and the drive that she did. So, she'll always be with us. I'm deeply, deeply saddened by her passing, and I do hope that we can have something come forward, a suitable memorial to remember her. But... But in the meantime, she's always with us in this chamber.
Thank you. Councilor Toomey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And we all certainly appreciated everything that Cheryl Ann did for the residents of our city. But she wasn't only confined to the residents of the city, but she was very active on the state level, too. She was continuous presence at the state house, expiring use issues. She wasn't just, she shared her presence and her strong advocacy for affordable housing, not only in Cambridge, but statewide. And I've known her since forever, just about. And she, either seen her on, walking on Cambridge Street, you know, she lived at 1221 Cambridge Street for many years, or just around the city. She was just a strong presence and never really looked for anything for herself. It was always about serving the other person. And as Councilor Mallon said, I was really taken aback when Elaine DeRosa, very good friend of Cheryl, I think it was not even two weeks ago with us, must have mentioned that Cheryl Ann was very sick. And it was the first that I had heard of it, and I was stunned. And to see the loss so quickly was just, it's really unfortunate. And we, the city and the state and the residents are certainly at a loss for her passing. But she, she did what she believed in, and she stood around. And she was just a great, great individual. And it's a loss for all of us. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Siddique.
I have gotten to know her through the work, her work on the Blue Ribbon Task Force. And we, she just, her knowledge, her questions, I learned so much in the last few months from her. And she was, as Councilor Simmons said, she was committed. We were, had phone conversations because she couldn't attend in person, but she was so committed to doing the work. And so I'm thinking of some of the eviction work that's coming out of the task force. It's really a testament to her and her desire to move on this piece. So I will definitely miss her. And I think there will be a lot of good work that comes out in her honor, so.
Thank you. Councilors Zondervan.
Thanks. I just wanted to add a little memory. About 10 years ago, I first met Cheryl Ann in this chamber when she was advocating for the Community Preservation Act. And the allocation is always 80% affordable housing. And she and all the other advocates had buttons that said 80, 10, 10. And I was new to advocacy and activism in Cambridge. And I was just so impressed by how organized they were and how strong their, their voice was. And I was thinking, I want to be like them. So I really appreciate her, her voice and will really miss it sorely as we go forward and continue to grapple with this very challenging issue of providing housing for people.
Councilor Carlon.
I got to know Cheryl Ann because of the Housing Trust. I knew of her before, but I didn't really get to know her. And she was really a trusted soul on that committee and very respected by the others. I do wish we had said all this, even though she would have been uncomfortable and would have looked down, but she would have heard it more directly. There aren't many people who literally dedicate their life for the public good as she has. Thanks.
On adoption, making unanimous upon adoption. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. We move to resolution number two. Happy birthday wishes to artist Spears. Councilor Simmons.
Thank you. Most of you, I think, know Mrs. Artis Spears, but she is an icon in her own right. And she's celebrating a special birthday, but I will not tell the years. Just suffice it to say, she's an icon in our city, business owner, a longtime election official. I often tease her, I say, "You're the only Republican I ever knew." She's not a Republican anymore, but she was at one time. And I often joke with her about that. All-around good neighbor, and she's having a birthday. And I just thought it'd be very fitting and nice to say happy birthday to her.
On adoption, making unanimous upon adoption. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. Resolution number four, a resolution on the death of Winston Jones. Councilor Simmons.
I thank you. I bring forward for your support this resolution to Mr. Winston Jones. I saw this gentleman about eight days ago. He was smiling, saying, "I'm coming by your office to see you." And I saw him up on the seventh floor. Come on and stop by. And two days later, he was dead. And it's just amazing because there was no forewarning. It just says to me, you know, you have to take, you have to live every day to its fullest and take nothing for granted because tomorrow's not promised to any of us. Winston, for those of you that may not have known, was an extraordinary gentleman. He worked with a lot of young men in the port, sort of a counselor, advocate. He didn't do it formally, he didn't do it for a paycheck. He did it because he cared about the men of the port. And he interacted with so, so many of them, my son included. And so I just cannot say how the port in particular, but the community in general, is going to miss this, this guy that for no other reason but he thought it was the right thing to do, will no longer be here to counsel young black men. And so I, it's, it's with a heavy heart that I offer this resolution that we acknowledge his passing. I can't say, I still sit here stunned because I just saw him the other day, and there was no evidence that he was at all sick.
Thank you, Councilor. On adoption, making unanimous upon adoption. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. We now move to resolution number 11. Congratulations to New Alliance Gallery on their reopening, filed by Councilor Zondervan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As was recounted in public comment, we lost a thriving artist community in Central Square with the EMF building. And I'm glad that New Alliance was able to find a new home nearby in Somerville. But it is sad that we have lost them and so many others to this unfortunate eviction. So I hope that, you know, as we go forward, and I know we're working through this in the task force as well, that we find ways to better protect the artists in our city so that we don't continue to lose them to our neighboring cities over time as, you know, the rents continue to go up and people are unable to afford it, both as residents and as businesses. Thank you.
I'll just, I just want to say quickly, because for information purposes, you mentioned things that are being done in the task force. And we, you know, a speaker at public comments said that, you know, the city needs to do some concrete things. And I think, I mean, I won't rehash the whole EMF building thing, but again, it was a private real estate sale that the city could not stop. And once we found out about it, we did try to intervene as best we could. So we didn't succeed, but I don't think people should, the narrative should be that this, that we did nothing. We certainly did more than that. But in the arts task force, for concrete things that are happening just within the last several months, secured funding for the arts through 15% of the hotel motel taxes, which is going to be about $2 million additional funding in fiscal year 20. The city's committed to 1% for the arts on the Tobin School project that's going to be a $200 million project, as well as future municipal projects rather than the cap that's been on past projects. That's going to generate millions. Updating the 1% for arts ordinance to include support for artists, not just onsite artist art. Creating an art liaison position in economic development and an arts-friendly website in licensing for ease of permitting arts and cultural events. Updating zoning to incentivize the arts-related uses. Creating a Central Square parking fund to support the cultural district as well as securing significant city investment in the cultural district. Getting rid of the busker fee for permits. And none of this is even the formal recommendations coming out of the mayor's arts task force, being led very incredibly by Councilor Mallon. So when folks get up and say, "We're doing nothing, and the city doesn't care about the arts," take a look at this list. Because that, I think that that's really, I think there's a lot going on. I can't speak for, two years ago, four years ago, maybe we were a little late to the game, but nobody can say that we're not paying attention to this now. And there's a lot of money being funneled to the arts and a lot of hard work going on in that task force that they deserve credit for. So I take a little exception to the idea that saying that the city doesn't care about the arts. Councilor Carlon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Related to that, I've mentioned this before, there are very few architects that now can afford to have offices in Cambridge. And you compare that to when I moved here in the early '70s. There were more architects in Harvard Square per square mile than anywhere else in the country. And now it's obviously the opposite. And people are moving downtown from Cambridge, downtown Boston, which is unthinkable. But the positive side, if one can say there's a positive side to the retail districts constricting, is I think we're going to have opportunities where artists will be able to rent some vacant storefronts, obviously not prime ones. Architects will be moving in there and already have started. And if we're going to build affordable housing in what I call neighborhood villages, some of the ground floor could even be for those kinds of uses. Different funding mechanism, but those kinds of uses. So I do think there's a future, and it has to be part of our master planning, which it hasn't to date.
On, oh, Vice Mayor.
One more example of artists being displaced, the Cambridge Artists Cooperative, which has been on Church Street since about 1980 and is one of the oldest continuously operating artists cooperative galleries. They show work from, I think, a couple of hundred different artists. And it's all staffed by artists who are members of the co-op. It is being displaced from its space on Church Street. They have leads on several different places in Cambridge, and I'm very much hoping that they're able to transition. But it's just one more example of, you know, an arts use not being able to necessarily pay a market rent. And I would add that competition, one of the places they had been looking at, I think, or considering could be going to a cannabis store. So we now have new players in the market that are competing for some of these spaces. So I wish them well.
Councilor Siddique.
And on that note, I want to make a plug for a committee hearing that I'm chairing tomorrow on vacant storefronts. And the fact that we have some folks who have left some properties vacant, and then we have folks getting displaced and being pressed out. So if you can join me, please do come. It's at 12:00 PM. And then to the mayor's point, it's important we don't conflate these issues. I think the amazing work that is coming out from the task force is inspiring, and we gotta keep doing it. And then we also think about not just the artists being displaced, but any local businesses that's been being displaced. I think it's a larger conversation. And there are limited tools at our disposal. Unfortunately, there's no commercial rent control. But I think we have to keep thinking about it and working on it, so. Thanks.
Councilor Carlon.
Just as both previous speakers have brought this up, it dawned on me that one of the big issues with cannabis is that what do you see? And state rules would dictate that there's some screening. Well, maybe this, we've always said, what is that screening? Maybe it's displays from this co-op that changes every three months, and it says, "Go to wherever their new address is." At least it would be fun and colorful and would serve a public use. And I think would be free, or we can make sure it's very low-priced.
Okay. On adoption, making unanimous. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. We move to resolution number 16. Congratulations to Janet Steinmeier on being named Leslie University's seventh president, filed by the Vice Mayor and myself. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. I just wanted to announce that Leslie has selected a new president. She won't start until July. She will be replacing Jeff Weiss, who was appointed a couple of years ago and was only able to serve briefly before having to step down for health reasons. So they've, I'm pleased to see they've appointed a woman. She has served on their Board of Trustees for many years. She's been a parent of a Leslie graduate. And she's currently president of a small college in New London, Connecticut. So they are holding, I looked in their newsletter, and they are holding some sort of welcoming informal events on May 1st, if people are interested in attending. You can go to the Leslie in Porter Square, the university hall atrium between 1:30 and 2:30. There's sort of a meet and greet with some brief remarks. Or between 3:00 and 4:00 on Wednesday afternoon, you could go over to 101 Brattle Street, Hastings Hall, and they're having the same sort of thing. And I'm sure that they will also be having a formal inauguration or whatever they call it, ceremony at some point. This is, this is good news for Leslie.
Councilor Carlon.
Mr. Mayor, I was invited to be a cosponsor. I responded, but I didn't get included. And I would like to be included on this.
Absolutely.
I actually was a consultant to Leslie for 10 years and worked on a number of buildings. And Threshold Program, which the new president's child was a part of, is an amazing program, which I'm sure you know about, helping kids who need extra attention. So thank you for inviting me.
Yes, absolutely. Sorry that your name wasn't listed.
An amendment to add, Councilor Carlon as a cosponsor. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. On the resolution as amended, making unanimous upon adoption. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. We now move forward to policy orders on a motion by Councilor Simmons to bring policy orders before us for discussion and adoption. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. Pleasure of the council. I'm going to pull number two for a quick amendment. Oh, okay. On number one, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. Number two, the city council endorse, the city council endorsement of the fossil fuel divest Harvard. This was filed by myself, Councilor Siddique, Councilor Zondervan. Speaking of following suit of technical mishaps, we were supposed to add the Vice Mayor to this as well. So I'd like to amend this to add Vice Mayor Deveraux as a cosponsor on the amendment. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. On the order as amended, all those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. We now move on to committee reports. Pleasure of the council. Question comes on accepting the report and placing on file for one and three. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. On number two, the question comes on accepting the report, placing on file, and adopting the two orders. All those in favor say aye, those opposed nay, the ayes have it. Roundtable minutes, there are none. Communications from city officers, there are none. Any late resolutions or orders? Madam Clerk.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. There's one late resolution. Congratulating Nate Pardo in silver lace finish on the American Ninja Warrior Junior submitted by Mayor McGowan.
Yeah, so Nate was a graduate of the Hagerty and at the high school, Anthony Galucchio's nephew, Lissa Galucchio, who I went to high school with, son. And he finished in the National American Ninja Warrior
National American Ninja Warrior Junior competition. He came in second place by like that much. He just missed out, but it was pretty amazing and fun to watch. They did a big thing at the Hagerty School for the community, and it was, it was very cool. So congratulations to Nate. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed nay, the ayes have it. And that is it. Any announcements? You announced your, Vice Mayor, Counselor Simmons?
Just a reminder that the finance committee will be meeting Wednesday, May 1st, starting at 9 o'clock. I know the clerk has reminded members that they have not let her know what you, what departments you want to hear from. She would very much like to have that by tomorrow, no later than noon. So just, I'm sorry. You want to, I will let you know the ones that have been pulled so far. Executive leadership, public information, tourism, personnel, information technology, public celebrations, the fire department, the police department, traffic, parking, and transportation.
And as Counselor Simmons has mentioned in the past, if you can, get questions ahead of time to folks. That's always a good thing. People, you know, obviously some will come up in the moment, but we want folks to be prepared to answer questions.
Thank you.
Any other announcements on a motion by?
Oh, one sec.
Counselor Siddiqui?
Sorry, not done yet. Two announcements. So I think I've talked in past housing meetings about an affordable housing finance 101. Happy report that it's been scheduled as part of the Affordable Housing Action Week. It's going to be, it's on your calendars for May 14th, from 6:00 to 8:00. So join if you can. There'll be some social media coming up and all that good jazz. But stay tuned. And then there, the mayor and I are hosting a interfaith community iftar here, May 22nd.
A what?
Community iftar, iftar is the breaking of the fast for...
Oh, I couldn't hear what you said.
Oh, no, sorry. I was mumbling. And so that is May 22nd in the chambers at 7:00, and the meal followed in senior center. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. On a motion by Counselor Toomey to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Those opposed nay, the ayes have it. We're adjourned.